Welcome. So just to remind everybody, the city of Middletown received 18,925,154 ARPA dollars. Of that, we have a remaining 9,741,887 to discuss today. The next slide coming up here, council is after several discussions with council staff and other parties over the end of the year are some of the major areas we have that I think we need to discuss. And I think probably the best way to do this, the simplest way to do this is to go down through and as we go down through each item, discuss. And then at the end, if there's other recommendations, areas, places you think we need to allocate some ARPA dollars to, that's how we proceed. So essentially of what we have left and what staff has compiled, these are the things we want to talk about. So the first thing is the Middletown Event Center, the old Town Mall Galleria project. Staff is asking that we commit an additional $500,000 to the project. That will bring our total ask of that to 8.1, Nathan?
It'll be 4.25, get over that, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, 4.25, thank you. So we went from 3.75, asking for an additional $500,000 towards that.
Paul, can I take a step back?
Yes.
I think it's important to let the audience know, they may not know what the original ARPA dollars went to. Because there's a lot that's not on there that we already spent or earmarked before to the public who may not know. I hate to put on the front.
And those earmarks were through legislative actions that were already taken.
And Sam, direct me, how much?
815.
850. Do you have the most updated numbers?
We're trying to do our description.
Okay.
This may be a little bit...
Even in estimate, I said, how many did you have dollars in the poll?
The bulk of that went towards 3.75 million, towards the Town Mall Galleria project, which has since moved over to the east side of the Highway.
It's in that spreadsheet I just sent you, Mike.
Can you say that all council as well?
Okay, so I know the, there we go. So as Paul was saying, a little over 800,000 went towards the project for LED streetlight, reduce our energy costs over time for all of our three lights. There was 1.1 million that went towards combination of premium pay as well as additional staffing. The council had taken action on here recently. We had the renovation, expansion of the police locker room. We're showing the 2.6 million that council has committed to the community center expansion and renovation project. A little over 460,000 for Wi-Fi installation in some of our parks. And then that 3.75, as the city manager looked at, was what had already been earmarked and committed towards the event center project. Which gets us to that 9.1 million that's either been spent or committed.
Thank you. So that brings us back to our potential uses of the first item on the agenda is proposing an additional $500,000 towards the event center on the east side of 75. And with the understanding that Warren County will be discussing making a similar increase in their ARPA.
Because they're going to mess up water than 50,000 in that change with Warren County.
Not exactly 50,000, but close.
What was their original, Warren County, what was their original...
3.5.
Yeah.
I think it was right, yeah, 3.5 million. And can you go into like any kind of update on that for people watching or?
We're nearing the end of the, I'd say, the second phase due diligence process. Obviously, as council is aware, is that there's been a collaborative development plan resuming application filed just before the planning commission next month. We are working with the underwriters and all the parties involved on the financing package for the public debt issues and are working through those details right now.
Do you think that extra 500 is enough to cover any anticipated...
It's a very dynamic public financing department right now.
As deep as that project is, I'm just, one of my concerns is that maybe that number isn't big enough. And that something else might come up that's under that project.
So to that end, I think that whatever we decide today, we need to leave, we can't allocate everything because, first of all, we're halfway through the four-year allocation period. We don't need to tell like the money's burning hole in our pocket and overspend it, right? Which I think we've done a really good job so far of not encumbering all the funds. So I just, I guess it's an overall arching theme, it's probably not the only project that we have that same issue. So as much as we can leave a significant amount in the undetermined category, we still have two more years to allocate the funds. So just as a, I agree with that point and it's just not the only project that's going to happen. We see all these fluctuations in cost all over the place.
Nathan, what's the total investment to project, what you said, rough estimate?
Total cost of the project's going to be right now hovering around about 175 million right now.
So this is 0.03% of, so small asking degrees.
We're very confident with this latest, the latest couple of weeks meetings with all the parties involved. We're getting there towards what the financial need is that hopefully then answering your question, that we're ready to move and we've made the financial commitment that we need to make. But as Nathan said, it's a very dynamic situation. But a week or so ago, we really took a argument with the planners with all the parties involved. And so pretty comfortable with where we're at moving forward and that the planners are on board and hopefully ready to go.
To at least start moving in and write it back.
Yes.
So to the mayor's point of, you know, keeping money on the table, which is definitely 100%, I think what we need to do. If said developer slash investor knows that we have this pot of money sitting waiting on potential situations like this, what stops them from saying, oh, they have $2 million in ARPA funds? So let's go back to when you say, give us that $2 million or else.
We've made it very clear in our negotiations with all the parties involved that it's a two-way street on things for the city and or Warren County to modify or augment their contribution and skin in the game, so to speak. Other parties have to have an offsetting, an offsetting stake.
And I think one of the things that we can all agree is that this project has the potential to be a major catalyst for Middletown and a major economic development project. So for me, that extra 500 is definitely something that I would be comfortable committing to. And like I said, I think we've got to also be prepared for any kind of future pickups that may come as regards to that project. Because it's just too important not to commit to.
Yeah, if that's going to get this project off the crosshairs line and moving, then yeah.
I'm very comfortable with the 500. Agree with the ladies that I might not be prepared to make all the decisions today, but I think we can get through quite a bit of these with some unanimity. I'm comfortable with that.
Everybody comfortable with moving to the next one? Okay, economic development. What we've done, especially here for economic development, neighborhood revitalization in downtown are huge. Rather than get specific with each one of these, we put what we felt we were comfortable with, all overall arching number. And then as we proceed over the next several weeks, months, year, we'll be able to refine a little bit more how we would specifically spend in each of these areas. So for example, in economic development, our request is 1.25 million. What that would cover would be the number one area that would take almost about a million dollars of it is economic development site preparation. So we have a few areas in town where we have the potential to bring in industry corporations, but we don't have the infrastructure built in there to accomplish that. So we've actually, in many cases, have been turned down by organizations of not wanting to come here and expand because we can't provide the infrastructure. This would allow us to put the infrastructure in there and put us in a position of better market, business and industry to come to these areas where we have land available to do such. The other $250,000 of that would go towards small business grants, such as, for example, if a business in downtown would like to apply, they could apply to our small business grant program. They would be vetted like the system we have set up now. And we would, we would award those grants as long as they meet the proper criteria to do such.
But not limited to downtown?
But not limited, thank you very much.
Anywhere in Middletown could apply.
Anywhere in Middletown, someone could have merely an example of what we've seen in the past.
Can you give us an example of locations and infrastructure that people need or...
So one of the ones that's on our radar screen there and is related to question is some of our commercial land worth of a hospital along Union Road. So last year, just to kind of give council some numbers here, last year, so our economic development department, we respond to requests for information and RFP requests that come from Jobs Ohio as well as the Dayton Development Coalition with Ready Cincinnati and then some other entities as well. And usually it is a site selecting consultant, broker, sometimes they do it in-house with corporations. And they're asking, they're saying, hey, we're looking to relocate or build something new in Ohio, in this area of Ohio. And we need, our preferred site is, you know, we need 15 acres with water and utilities and this much electric and highway access within 10-minute drive, so on and so forth. And some of those are requests that we don't meet the parameters. But we're looking at a significant number of requests. So back in 2022, so last year, we were disqualified on only the utility, you know, the utility, you know, utility being to the site. We were disqualified on almost, I'm looking here, about 15 requests out of 80 that we received the entire year. And that doesn't mean we would have landed any of those end users, but it was an automatic disqualification. And look at the criteria that we were looking at through the Jobs Ohio RFI process and that we were meeting all the other requirements with the exception of there was no utilities in that vicinity. And so usually unless a company or end user is really, really focused on a particular location or a particular interchange or the like, they immediately just discard it and move on.
Nathan, how long would it take for us to create that infrastructure, right? So it's timing, it's a issue, right? They could wait for us to put those utilities in, but at what time cost to them? So how long would it take for us to make these sites ready for these types of projects?
Probably about a year.
A year? And that's just not something that they're going to be willing to wait around for?
It's, you know, in the site selection community and how those consultants work or whatnot, is they just immediately just filter out folks that don't meet some of the minimum requirements right off the bat. So that company doesn't even get shown the, hey, here are your prime sites here that need all your conditions. Here's a couple that are close, they don't even see those.
It's like the Zillow search for a house, right?
Exactly, exactly. Your ask price is $500 more than the search criteria they went and see.
Aside from the, is that the only property that we're looking at or?
We also have a couple of sites on Union Road that would also potentially fit here. It's more of a pricing thing, you believe, for a million dollars of that 1.25 that we can get it accomplished.
Both Yankee and Union?
It'll be very, I think so, yeah. And I think that goes back...
And industrial park center?
And that goes back, I think, council's kind of conversation of leaving a little bit in opportunity reserve as we say, hey, you know, we thought we were a million, or it's a million one and we still want to do it. Keep in mind, everything that we're talking about today will ultimately come back in front of you folks for the awarding of contracts, awarding of bids or, you know, some final legislation.
Being that all of those are lumped together, the extensions and the small business grants, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're not going to be taking away from the small business grant allocation in order to fund the additional amount that we would need for that site readiness.
Yes, that is correct.
And this is something we would start working on somewhat immediately after the pass legislation and not wait for a potential company with the interest in, correct?
Yeah, the, if it's your druthers and your consensus and we get whatever law director says is some final action by council on that item specifically, then our public works department would go out and solicit some design firms to go ahead and scope it and start drawing on pieces of paper and then bid it out.
How soon could we expect legislation on an item like that? And like you said, it's about a year to site readiness from them?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Cash's office or whatnot, but if we were to get something in front of you folks in February, we could very well have it taken care of before you get here.
Hopefully when the weather breaks, it gets nicer.
Yeah, I would imagine if we complete that construction in 2023, that we would open ourselves up to opportunities for groundbreaking construction and stuff.
Exactly, exactly. So even if it's not completely finished and there's not any us being able to say that, hey, you know, there is a sewer to that site, yeah, but we're already, we're already contracted and it's going to be there in the next three months, that gets us over the hump.
What's the threshold for our posting of sites on Ready Cincinnati, like within the city? How does that determine what goes on there? I'm a lot of redneck, I think we have, and I see nothing and may, I see no industrial sites at all. I don't see the research facility.
I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you.
Maybe I've got a filter, I don't know now, but...
Yeah, because I know we submit all of those, there are times when we have experienced some hiccups where sites that have been loaded kind of vanished and then they come back a week later kind of thing.
And Haven Studios is on there.
Yeah. And it's, and it's...
First I pass?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was...
And keep in mind too, it's my understanding, I haven't said out already, it's in specifics on this too, they also, I think, draw from other data sources as well. Besides what we have.
Okay, not just what we put out.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
We will do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If we're not advertising.
Yeah.
I'd be supportive of some level of development grants. A lot of these businesses were just humbled during the pandemic and people helped them get back, it would be good. As far as the site readiness, I think I might have some clients up in that area, so I'm going to stay out of this for now until maybe staff and the event can compare good sites we're talking about. Be careful.
I'm fully supportive of getting these sites ready. I just want to make sure we're doing that, that we're advertising there.
You know, a lot of surrounding cities that I've looked at are ARPA companies, a lot of them are doing this exact thing, so.
Yeah, the return on that is obvious and help our citizens make more money at the end.
Yeah, exactly. At the end of the day, that's the beauty about this is we're going to take this ARPA dollars and we're going to invest it, which is going to give us a greater return, I tend 15, 20-plus years down the road.
And that's, that's getting like the bigger, in my mind, the bigger focus of ARPA, which the care tax funding was to help relieve, you know, immediate needs that were going on. ARPA is intended to kick, re-kickstart the economy so that we can then, as a community, from whatever we've done with ARPA, end up making more money at the end so that we can spend more money on the needs of the city.
Returning those tax revenue dollars. And to that point, the 250 in economic development, small business grants, I think could be a bigger number. That, you know, if we're moving some things around, I personally feel like that number could be higher.
In my mind, I think by what we're looking at and doing with ARPA, I would hope that in the future we can create programs then that do have more money for that kind of a thing because of what we're using our ARPA dollars for, so that they, we get virtual back in the city.
Let me ask you, are you saying that for new business grants or like, for example, Central Avenue and surrounding downtown businesses that have been affected by pandemic construction, those types of things? Are you saying also open to them as well or?
This would be all encompassing. Are you asking us that?
Well, I guess mine.
I mean, I would like to see it, I would like to see it open to all types of applications. You know, if you have a small business or you want to start a small business and you have a need, then you can apply to the city and say, this is my need, this is why. And that there wouldn't be limitations, something could apply.
Well, I have no problem with, like Rodney suggested one time, that for the businesses that have been affected, you know, if they can spend money on marketing or those types of things or, I don't know, just draw people in, I would kind of support with that as well.
I like, the last time we talked about, kind of getting into the execution of the small business grants, maybe we should, I don't know if we need to get into that today or not, but we talked last, we did a planning session about the specific types of grants we would give out and what they'd be applied for, which we then did. I think Primo was a good example where we could execute names on specific equipment and things so that we know that it's a, it's actually an improvement that could be, like it's something physical that we can get back with massage or something like that, that gives into the infrastructure of the city or actual capital items.
Yeah, and ultimately anytime those grant applications come through, they, you know, in order to allocate these actual funds, those grants typically come back to city council for approval. So we would be able to analyze each of those as they come to us.
Yeah, I don't, we probably don't need to get into the reasons to what we would be approving.
But that means that depending on how wide open the, you know, the application is, I think speaks to the amount of money that we're putting in there, right? So if it's open to everybody for all things, is that enough? You know, that's just, I think that's where I'm, where I take what you're saying and think about the number.
Well, I would say, I mean, I feel comfortable with that with what, between the small business grants and the infrastructure. And then that's where perhaps we have this extra, believe ourselves and look over later. And if we, in a year, still have some money, some ARPA dollars and it's clear that there's not a place that is absolutely needed, that that's a great use to cost that for small business grants.
I mean, if somebody comes along and needs X amount of dollars to accomplish just their open their business and it's worthy for the city, then I'm all for trying to provide more funds. So I agree from here. I think we need a plan for the future, you know, these dollars are going to be, not be around forever, you know? And there's always asks, every year there's asks, that we need to have a small line item in our budget that, you know, maybe we had ran $100,000 every year, 150, 75, whatever the budget might allow that year, so.
Yeah, I think that we have talked about that as being a normal in the budget.
Right, and if these projects can increase our tax revenues to a point where we've got that funding source available, you know, that's, that's the goal, is to keep building that revenue base.
I guess my point is it doesn't necessarily just have to be on them.
Right?
Right, and our other, yes, our economic development, our public works, which is a great point.
But to see that program, I think this is a good allocation of funds.
Any other questions? We'll move on. Neighborhood revitalization, this once again is one that we didn't feel it was necessary today so much to get deep into the woods here or into the weeds, whatever you want to call it. We've suggested $800,000 into neighborhood revitalization, which will go towards things such as maybe a similar program to one we've seen in other areas, such as Hamilton's Neighborhood 17 Strong Program, things such as infill sites, cleanup, community cleanup efforts, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of taken what numbers and things that were in there from the past suggestions and put it in there to come up with a figure of around $800,000. Pretty much with this one, that my plan is, is that we'll take development services and they will be the ones who come back with plans on each of those that we will present to council and for example, say, we're going to take $50,000 and put it in Oakland. And don't, I'm not saying 50,000, just that's an example. Or we're going to take this amount of money for the infill lots, this amount of money for a community cleanup project. And exactly what we're going to do, what does that mean, community cleanup? They will have plans on what that exactly means. So I'll open that up, this one was pretty broad, a few suggestions.
Well, I'll speak on that first. And I know that the 800,000, that seems like a lot of money, you know, it's not. And we have, you know, the way I look at neighborhood revitalization is, we have three neighborhoods in my opinion, and there are probably more, but the three that kind of bind it. Manchester's been ignored by the city for years, and that's Amanda, Manville and Oakmont Park area. When I say ignored, I mean, if you drive through the neighborhoods with trees every day or the alleys or the streets, there's definitely a need for a cleanup or need some help if they haven't had. And in City Next, Amanda area, decades ago, they made a lot of promises and they did not keep their promises to that area. I know I was here one and a half and I was on patrol, it's, that area needs generally more help than, they might use $100,000 off of you, so. Not that we're going to go with that, but...
Rodney, what are the, do you have any just examples of what the improvements are that they might...
Yeah, the sewer issues in Amanda, that's a huge one. I don't know if we can do that.
That's a...
I know what I'm getting to that, but that's a, the sewer areas of Amanda are not good. I know we have a park 21, this is a hundred thousand, we got $2 million for that. If you drive down Virgin, if you go to Oakmont Park, the alleys are a mess. I mean, those things, you could go down a list of things in these neighborhoods.
You could breathe dumpster after dumpster in there.
You could.
I'm just trying to put in my mind, like, how much should, I just want to make sure.
Well, I don't think we should go much higher than 100,000, I'm just saying, but you could go, there's actually three neighborhoods that could use that and there's more than that. I think that's a big part of what we're trying to do for our city over the next few decades, we want to keep people here, clean, a clean city, and that's what we're trying to do. And I've had people tell me, well, people should take care of their neighborhoods, and they should, but not everybody is able to do that. We have garlands that can't keep their yards where they need to be. You know, at times the city will issue a, and this is not the city's fault because that's the rule, that's the law, the ordinance, is that we'll issue $100 fine for some, for paint shit on a garage or high weeds, but then the city doesn't maintain our own areas. We have high grasses up here in some of our areas that we know. We have high grasses up here in some of our areas that we know, and that's my point. We need to clean it all up. I guess that's just my point, it's just.
Yes, I agree.
Just point my balance on, but I can tell you three neighborhoods, I could come to my mind specifically that need a lot of help.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of the eight hundred thousand. If we don't invest in our neighborhoods, we don't have a strong community. Uh, I always hope that moving forward over the next five, ten, fifteen years, that that can be an annual investment, maybe not eight hundred thousand every year, but have some sort of recurring investment. My only feedback would be caution to staff about adding staff at one time dollars, and I don't even know if you consider adding staff with these, with these funds, but if we are looking at adding staff or anything like a, a, a strong neighborhood type of organization, to make sure that that is sustained before we go hire somebody for two years and then just have to let them go and leave a community and open the works with, without the services that they've become accustomed to.
There, there's no plan for that, and you know, we do realize that. There's no plan in any of these arfa dollars here to add staff. Now, at the last council meeting, to get us to the first six months of this year was to bring the two positions on for the first six months, but then that's accounted for in our, our budget.
Thank you.
I agree with that on the staff dollars tab, because you know, our four code enforcement don't have the bodies that need. We don't have that, and it still wasn't enough. Um, so, but how do you pay it for? It's not the same with the arfa, but it's just not, part of the one time thing.
And also, I should have pointed this out earlier, but I didn't. You see, we've left a buffer at the very end of what the suggestions are here. And that buffer at the end, if we do everything here, that buffer is four hundred and eighty-one thousand eight eighty-seven, what we still have left to, to, to work with. And then so, any adjustment, you know, will have to account for in there, but do realize, this list here does not take us down to zero. We still have a buffer there, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, that we would have to decide what we're going to do with either through your suggestions, through the rest of the morning, or in weeks, months to come. Once again, to remind everybody, we have to have all these dollars allocated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, and they have to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Did I get that right, Sam?
I personally like to see the remaining be in the millions, a couple million, um, after today. Because like, we're halfway there till the end of twenty twenty-four. So just in my mind, so you, that's where I'm kind of going to move the numbers in my own head as far as.
I'm fully supportive of it. It's an investment in our people, communities, various assets, and today, it's people, so.
The only comment I have about the neighborhood revitalization efforts is that we've got so many great organizations, um, both here in Middletown and originally, that we've worked with on this neighborhood revitalization. Um, I, I think of groups like SELF and the, and the work that they do to, um, you know, to help people revitalize their homes and do home improvements and those sort of things. Um, and I would hope that we could, um, make those dollars stretch even further by working with those types of organizations in Middletown and surrounding areas, so.
And they currently do. Development Services really does a fantastic job in stretching those dollars into self programs and the homework.
I know they get CBT dollars from us every year, but with a fund like this, I think organizations like SELF could do just even more. So just to throw that out there.
Any further discussion on the neighborhood revitalization?
That dollar note's a hard one for me to even say yes or no to because I don't know any specifics, so it's just kind of thrown.
That's, and that's why, that, that's why, once again, it, you know, we'll, we'll bring forward spending any money out of each recommendation.
Yep.
We're talking about the downtown RFQs now?
Uh, no, just the revitalization.
Does staff have any uh, timeframe for when they would bring back recommendations?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm sure within the next couple of months, you're going to see us move, especially as the weather gets warmer. Uh, I know Development Services is doing a lot of work in the area of the infill lots and the type of housing that could go on those, and that's going to be a big decision for you. On those infill lots we have, what kind of a house do we want to put there and what's going to be the city's investment in?
So I was going to ask for an update after the last council meeting, I forgot to. So as far as the infill lots, we're getting pretty close, kind of. Doing something with those. I know there's like ten, twelve that can definitely be built from today that would sell for the current market value and we wouldn't have to subsidize or incentivize.
We're getting very close to give you recommendations. Is, is that a good way to explain it actually? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, downtown RFQs, this is the tough one because this is kind of right. Um, I'm looking at the downtown, you've been on the rich, you might put the caps on the, the lens. We, we know what's there. Uh, the tough thing is, is to try to monetize it. And so looking at some of the numbers I've seen from some of you and what was there in the past, we, we earmarked three million dollars there. Uh, I would imagine it's going to, at the end of the day, we'll spend a lot more than that down there. So I mean, I don't know how much in the weeds we're going to get into this. This, Mayor, this might be kind of like where you were talking, some of the money at the end may, we may have to robustly say we put the, that's the, it's, I wish I had a better answer, where you've had some conversations with Wayland here in the last couple of days and maybe we're going to get a clearer picture on that soon.
Yeah, and I think everyone shares some of that right now, just so you guys can understand. I also want to start with, I, I looked back at, you know, what at least three of us were called in initial arfa discussions, but um, we originally had ten million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars allocated for our downtown, one batch or another. And I just say that because wow, we've really scaled back, right? And so I just want to put a little bit in perspective of um, the initial thought process and where we are now, just to remind ourselves of what, you know, of the past and different discussions, because we've had some really good discussions in the past and we had good purpose. So anyway, so with Wayland, first of all, um, great updates and good conversations with Wayland Ventures in the last few days. Uh, just kind of starting the year fresh, talking about where they're, where they're going, um, their thoughts about Middletown. They're heavily, heavily involved in dating right now, as, as you could look in the paper, pretty much everywhere they are revitalizing a lot of old buildings, a lot of, um, really exciting developments in dating. So they're wrapping up a lot of the plans and final aspects of those, and on the phone a couple of days ago, they, Phil Wayland himself and Barry Alberts are, are putting context, said this is the year of Middletown. That is a huge statement, and I feel like our parish city should be just left in joy because this company flipped half of Louisville around, half of dating around, and they're coming in Middletown. That is so exciting to me, and I hope everybody knows that it speaks to the people of Middletown, it speaks to the assets we have here in this city and our future. Because a company like that is not going to come and spend a lot of time and money and labor in a city that they don't believe that there's a, a strong future in. So that's really exciting. I, I just also want to say, if we don't commit enough to our downtown, we commit to fail. Because if we just throw a little bit at it, it's not enough, and then what do we do? We're like, relax and let our brains have passing it, right? And so then, how do we move forward from there? So I just want to make sure we're thinking that through. And then, um, when I, I pushed them a little, I said, hey, I know it's early in the game, but can you throw some numbers? Like, what do you think might be needed? And it was interesting, and they've done so much redevelopment. First of all, they leveled higher over tax credits uh, more than Kentucky, which is a good thing, right? And so they're, they're less concerned about the actual, um, ability to get the buildings, like the Manchester, the Sunshine, um, I'm just going to start with those, those two first, because those are the two on the radar at the beginning. Um, they're less concerned about building the staff to revitalize those buildings, they're more concerned about creating the infrastructure in our downtown that supports the redevelopment of everything, which makes sense, right? They want everyone to succeed, and so they're talking about, they said, look, in the next five years, what you need to focus on are the capital, or sorry, the capital, the, the infrastructure of your downtown, right? The pedestrian aspects of it. And that's why their next step with us is to, they want to work on a, um, what's the term that we use, maybe?
Master plan?
Kind of, yes. It's a, it's a, yes, basically a, a, a look into downtown and, and overall recommendations for the flow and how everything can work together in, in what they picture. And so they asked for that as very minimal, at that next step, they said probably sixty thousand combined, and they want to share it fifty-fifty with us to do that plan. So to me, that's, yeah, we kind of talked about doing that anyway, so that was an easy one. Um, but obviously we need to think about that three grand somewhere with the budget, but then they said, okay, if you're thinking next five years, infrastructure downtown, not into the buildings, into our infrastructure that helps everybody, that we should think about five to ten million dollars. It's a lot. However, when we think about the downtown revitalizing itself, that's how it's going to happen. And it doesn't have to all be done in one chunk, it doesn't have to all be done with ARFA. It can come out of capital improvements that we're, you know, so, um, but we do need to be thinking about that, right? And then I also say to that end, really think about everybody benefiting. It's like the Central Avenue improvements, that we would be spreading it out further. So, um, and there have been, well, obviously there's more details in the discussions, but that's where they're at with that. I have a lot of confidence in their ability to get the tax credits worked out over time and get these buildings. They want to save, that they, that they believe Manchester absolutely at this point can be saved, they, they, they're confident about it. Of course, don't commit anything, but, um, it, they're, they really have done a lot of research on our city than we may even realize. And they're, they're very, very into it and claiming to be here.
It sounds like they understand the concerns that almost anyone who's come into our downtown and said, oh yeah, I can do a project down here, they, they always discover, okay, we've got to have a drawl in order for a hotel to work, in order for this or that, or anything else to work. We've got to have a vibrant downtown that people want to visit. And so that speaks to us investing in the infrastructure down there and those sort of things because, you know, those attractions are what draws people to want to invest and come into our downtown because we've got to do so with intent. Our, our, our city center is not very close to the highway. It is aging and has a lot of, um, a lot of unique needs downtown. And so.
The other connected piece they specifically mentioned was, we need to get ourselves connected to the River Drive more, which we all know there's this kind of gap, right? And how do we close that gap? It's going to require infrastructure to do that.
I'm fully supportive of three million dollars being set aside for this. Um, you know, this feeds right into the economic development piece, it feeds right into the downtown, or the small business grants, it feeds into neighborhood revitalization. I mean, um, you know, if we have a, a flourishing Manchester and Snyder and Rude Park Walkways, it's, it's going to help everybody, it's going to help the community. So I fully support that. And this is, was kind of, kind of goes to my point earlier about leaving some money aside because, you know, if we need five, eight, ten million dollars over the next five years, I think it would behoove us to let public works go in and look at what are we doing over the next five years? What is the five year plan? How much can we get there aside tomorrow, just by using the funds we have available? Uh, what's, what's our bidding plan next year? You know, those kind of things. I think it would be good to know that information before we maybe made a couple, a couple more million dollar decision. Because if, if we can keep it at three, and we know we can do four million dollars over the next two to three years, then maybe we can leave it at this. But if we can only get to the main blocks, then I would consider looking at more. Because this is a, this is a huge priority for me. If we can save some of those historic buildings uh, with these one-time funds, I think it's a great use of the money.
And I think just so council's aware too, we have kind of two other parallel paths going on for the downtown region and its redevelopment. One is staff is looking at the creation and adoption of a couple of new incentive districts and the like. And also keep in mind, council's aware, our omnibus, um, economic development incentive compensation agreement with the school district expires this year. And so we'll be entering into negotiations with them, and this is, this area of town's a, a critical one for the city and one that, that we'll need to discuss with them as to how better to leverage those incentive programs going forward.
Can you explain that a little more, Mark?
Yes, ma'am. So.
I mean, some, some of the audience in the back cannot hear, so we, we all may need to speak louder.
My apologies. Yeah, so, uh, many moons ago, the city, because as council's aware, whether it's a TIF, a community realty investment area, an enterprise zone, or certain other property tax or other types of economic development incentive programs, um, oftentimes there's a requirement that you have to negotiate on a case-by-case basis with the school district um, over, you know, compensation of redirected tax revenues. So let's take a TIF for instance, you know, you have the option of doing a, a ten-year seventy-five percent TIF or up to a thirty-year non-school, so they're left whole. Anything in between or anything, anything that's not one of those two options has to be negotiated. What the city and, and the school district decided to do, that instead of every time a project comes forward across the entire city within the school district, and we have to have one-off, one-off transactional, you know, conversations and negotiations, we created a, we agreed to a framework by which, okay, so for instance, anything that would be TIF'd in the city, so if council passes a new TIF ordinance, the school district had agreed to take twenty-five cents on the dollar of what they would normally have gotten if the TIF had not been in place. There's a similar provision on the CRAs, there's a similar provision, and I can't remember the exact percentages for enterprise agreements that are, that are authorized by, by this body. That, that agreement expires here in the very near future. Um, and so that's a, it provides, I think, a good, a good moment for us to examine, okay, are there parts of town where this one-size-fits-all city-wide arrangement maybe doesn't make as much sense for everybody involved? Um, because a vibrant community is not only, I would hope, not only important to city council, but also to the board of education. Um, because it's, you know, it's a hand-in-glove situation. So wanted to put that on your folks' radar string, um, as we progress through probably the second quarter of this year. Our hope is to have something negotiated with them for, for your consideration, as well as, as the school.
Mayor, can I ask, uh, would it be possible for you to get me and Renee in an email of a synopsis of your discussions with Wayland, so we can make sure we reuse that as, as framework room, that would help us tremendously.
Just for the audience, just to give some background, I don't know, Mayor, if you want to share how we got into discussions with Wayland. I mean, I, I'm sure that a lot of them are aware of our, our key process, and that we sent out a request for people to, you know, make proposals on some of our city-owned properties. Um, and that is how we became connected and replied to an RF, uh, RFP process that we went through, our key process that we went through. Um, and identified several properties downtown that he was interested in.
Yep, he, he came with a great name, we're going from it. Last year, staff and I met with him and, um, he did the keynote presentation, right? And so we went and talked to him afterwards, uh, told about Middletown, and then that's what, when the RFQ came out, we passed the RFQ, like, and he was like, okay, the city's, uh, looks like it's worth its time. So by far, it's been like.
Response to the city-owned properties, right?
Yeah, city-owned, yep. I think Swallow's is included in that as a bunch of properties too.
The city identified six properties that we put up for the RFQ. The Manchester Hotel, the Sunshine Building right behind it, First Financial and Main and Central, the Swallow's Lot, and then there's two vacant properties on Broad Street between Reinhardt's and Main Street. And those are the six properties that are part of the downtown RFQ. We put the RFQ out and then staff vetted with some couple council members those ideas, and we settled on Wayland as the, the company that I'm going to go with to help us, uh, develop those properties.
At a similar time, I don't know if the RFQ was combined or separated, but the Lincoln and Roosevelt sites were also separate. So same timing, those came out and we, we all took it with us.
And I think those properties are also important, uh, to the development of downtown in the same way that I just want to make the point that um, the entire gateway in Middletown from the highway to downtown becomes a part of this downtown revitalization effort. Um, you know, they can't get down there without driving to Middletown. So um, while we discuss all of these, um, funding sources, I think it's really important to say, you know, there is a lot of investment in downtown here, but, um, we are, we haven't lost focus of everything that it takes to get downtown and that gateway.
To that point, we were talking yesterday, and you made a really good point, you know, when you look. You know, when you look at, you know, where we started at the entertainment center on the east side of town, you work your way down central and you look at, you know, Roosevelt and Lincoln and potentially a new entertainment or door district, you know, they're in the mid, mid-city area. And then you move downtown and you set aside three million dollars or four million dollars and you add that to the Central Avenue improvements. Then you look on the south side of town, you've got the community center going up with eight to ten to eleven million dollars of investment. You've got new fire stations going on. Really have a nexus of the whole community getting investment and really a, a one-size-a, a lifetime opportunity to, you know, charge this community up.
That's very well said. I just, you said exactly what I was getting at. It's the whole city.
At the end of the day, all this is infrastructure investment for the most part. So all the people that are here every single day working here on these things, they're meeting with the businesses, those types of things. So it's kind of how it, uh, profit for the city as well to most.
Any other questions on the downtown RFQs?
I would like to set aside more money for that, but I also am okay with if we set aside the three and leave ourselves with a large buffer of multiple million, like a couple million sitting there, I feel more comfortable. And then obviously, we know we've got to look at capital, uh, like Todd was saying, um, our capital funds and our, our infrastructure, the public works and our budget that's moving forward. Also, we may be able to find some grants and, yeah. So I'd rather have more, but as long as we get slush, I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, so now, uh, we'll start moving down the list to get into some more specific things. The first thing on our list is the Sorgotter House. Uh, we're all very much aware of the success that it had downtown of, of renovating and revitalizing and just having some, some, um, awesome things for Middletonians and visitors to come to at the Sorgotter House. However, they have some significant challenges that they're facing to stay in, in operations. Uh, our recommendation from staff is to allocate one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the Sorg, uh, which will assist them with, uh, their acquiring, uh, the building as their mortgage is going to do, I believe in June, July. Somebody put this word.
It's June. It's June.
So Mayor, you shared a larger number at the last council meeting. It encompassed some other, other costs that they had asked for. I don't know if staff had considered those additional costs or if you wanted us to talk through those.
We, we did. We, we say no's considered them, but in the balance of other requests and needs, uh, this is where staff thought would be a starting point.
Yeah, I think, so we talked about, and, and I think that the Sorg has been very, um, understanding of the fact that this is a community effort. They haven't looked directly just to the city for funds, which I do appreciate. And they're working hard to get money privately well. But they, there's really the three things, right? The balloon mortgage payment, which is one hundred and sixty-five, fifty thousand dollars for the roof, and then two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get Main Street retail area white box so that they can start pulling in, um, these run, run money. Yeah, and they've raised, I think, seventy grand so far. I guess one minute. Oh, yeah, here. I'll look at the final number of what basically as a community, we, if we want the Sorg to start eating, yeah, forty was not, there you go. Um, three hundred and seventy-five thousand is, if, if they can get that in twenty-twenty-three from some source or another, that's going to get them moving so that they can start actually pulling more money in, renovating things, and then moving forward and, and not just kind of holding, you know, holding pad and break.
That doesn't include seventy-five.
The what?
Seventy-five thousand, Eric, had, are they counting that?
That does include that, so I took that out.
So would be four forty or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, but they raised seventy. Then they already raised seventy.
So three seventy-five would be the remaining balance.
Yeah.
Um, I just have to give some kudos to that organization for all of the work that they have done to bring that, uh, that building, uh, up in just the last two or three years. I mean, from having no heating and air conditioning just years ago to, you know, selling out shows, um, is incredible. You still go in there for the show and you can see how much work still needs to be done. And it's such an iconic, uh, such an iconic destination for Middletown. I mean, that's something that we will never be able to replicate or replace. The history that, that it brings to our city is unmatched. So I just commend all of the hard work that the volunteers and nonprofits put into bringing that back for revitalization efforts are incredible.
Yeah, to be clear, so that's just the start of what they need, of course. Like the goal is to get them so that they can start making more revenue. But the, like, the next cost, right, they've got fire states that are muted at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Commercial building windows, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, demolition auxiliary building in the south parking lot, twenty thousand dollars. Plastic repair in the theater, two hundred thousand dollars. Invasive waterproofing, so we're worth for ten thousand dollars. So it's not like they're asking for the world when it comes to this. It's from a business perspective, they're trying to get to the point where they can start making funds to get at the rest of it. And every developer that has come to town, every city partner has said, this Opera House is the demand driver for your downtown and it's absolutely critical to all the business and the community's success. And those are people coming from outside Middletown who don't even know, you know, the emotional ties we have to the building. So just from a dollars and cents perspective, economically, I, I am supportive for sure of helping them continue their mission and, and get them moving. So, yeah, if we have more money to throw at it than that, I would be, um, upset by it. But I also, maybe that's part of the slush and we say, and we, we have specific items that we say, hey, if we can put money toward these, we would like to. So if, if it's the downtown RFQs and the Sorg, we got to keep that list going so that we know just like kind of what debt we said we wanted to spend more on.
Yeah, and I think at one point, the commercial property piece of the Sorg was considered when we were talking to people about downtown RFQs and, and, and these potential projects, that that, that was also considered in the mix, that as a potential, um, driver for economic growth is finishing that commercial building.
Yes, yeah, that's going to be something that obviously the, the nonprofits is going to have to decide how they want to move forward with that.
But I think you talked about, um, them asking if there was any way that the city could assist in that process to putting out an RFQ specific to the commercial building to try to get that developed. And that was mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, city staff have been able to kind of help them through the process. That would be nice to have for sure. I think.
Didn't you guys do that one time years ago?
We recently did it.
Okay.
We, we had a developer walk through last month.
Jamie worked with Tom and.
And it, it, well, it's silly, that's, I'm not supposed to talk, can I talk? Um, Jacob at Economic Development contacted us and said, we might have somebody that's a good fit for you guys for the commercial building. And we were one hundred percent all in. Can I say who it is? It was the Freemasons in Middletown. There's, I don't know how much of that I can say for them. But they came and looked at our space to move the lodge there. And because they have a lot of elderly folks involved in their lodge, they needed an elevator, which the building has. We had two folks come out and give us quotes for just bringing the elevator back to code, and that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Mason told, I said, we have some money, that's more money than we're comfortable in spending on one particular thing. So we had entertained several times doing something with that kind of aside. Because it's, so.
It's always been one of those projects.
It's been in there for like thirty-some years.
Has a lot of potential to.
Which is so much that it's designed.
Many dollars to the organization too.
It is, and that's absolutely one of, one of those other.
It possibly the revenue.
Building is a separate thing, like obviously it's attached to the theater, the Opera House, but it's kind of.
It's a separate entity, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm completely supportive of the one hundred and sixty-five. You know, I think this is, for those who maybe didn't go to the council meeting or see the council meeting this week, I wish I could get everybody, everyone, everything on this list and everything that isn't even on this list is worthy of the funds. I wish I could get everybody as much as they wanted, um, but we can't because we only got, only got nineteen million bucks. Um, so I, I would do the one sixty-five and have no concerns about that and would agree that if we get to the end, you know, and there's, there's a couple hundred thousand left over, I would certainly reconsider. But given the one sixty-five, let them pay off the mortgage and let them continue to have conversations with the community foundation and others to, to see what, what can come from other sources. So I'm good with your recommendation there.
Yeah, I agree that if the funds become available through discussions or reallocation of any of these other, uh, amounts, I, I, I would like to, I feel like the roof is a really important investment to make in that historic building. And getting the storefronts, um, white boxed is, I think, Mayor, you said, um, it was your third tenant that you talked about at the council meeting about, um, the way we see ourselves and our visual, um, you know, our visual representation to the city and storefronts like that, I think are important to sort of that vitality of, of what's going on on the street level, on the ground level. So I'm, I think those two additional asks are obviously not encompassing of all of the projects that, um, that they have there, but those are two critical, um, pieces. So I think we can fund those other two pieces, I'm on board for that. But helping them pay off that, uh, that mortgage is, is going to really help them, um, get to a place where they can start making some money, so. And to reinvest their own profits. So the money that they start making when they have this, uh, white box space on the ground level and, 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 and having that mortgage paid off are just going to be reinvested into the profit, right? So.
A couple other things that make me feel confident about sending money to the Sorg. One, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, things are going on there. It's all your ground, so it's not like we've got, um, something that is only benefiting certain, certain times. The other thing is, I do feel like when they, when they handed me this about the, the, where they see funds need to go and how to prioritize and giving me like very detailed plans, I, I said, that is a group worth investing in. They are really working hard and putting the time into, to figure out where they need to responsibly spend their time and money and communicating that. And I, I appreciate that very much. And it's a small feat, you know, volunteering. And a lot of people in Middletown volunteer for a lot of things and you're doing a great job of that.
Okay, any other comments? So I guess what I'm hearing is we're covered with one sixty-five. And as we see possibly the, of, uh, of funds being available towards, uh, our ultimate decision that we may be able to revisit it and add funding to. Next on our agenda is the Aquatic Center. And this, uh, we've had a lot of discussion about this and I would assume this will be a, a topic here that we really need to discuss. Staff has listened to members of council and, uh, other individuals in the city of Middletown. And we felt that it was important that we support this aquatic center and leave it here on the agenda for council to make the ultimate decision on the direction we should go in terms of an aquatic center for the city of Middletown. The aquatic center that we're referring to here would be in, in, uh, cooperation with the Atrium YMCA and would go on as attached as part of that facility on the Innovation Drive, uh, and, uh, a lot of, they made a couple of presentations. Uh, we've had some meetings on it, so I'll open it up to further discussion once council moves.
I feel like the Aquatic Center doesn't get anything either side wants. And I feel like it is dumping money into a hole to be, I, I think that there's another way to get at what we want, which is to give our citizens places to gather and to get people's going. I think if we were to subsidize pool memberships at the existing pools for people who perhaps couldn't afford, um, them otherwise, maybe through CUD funds or the like, it would be one, far less expensive. Two, putting money into existing pools that do need help and membership.
About the YMCA.
There's two YMCA's and I.
YMCA pools.
Also, Forest Hills, I did speak with them and they said they would love to absorb more memberships in, in a, in a partnership with the city if we want. I, I just, by no means, I made any commitments. I just wanted, I hate when, uh, like in the past, Forest Hills has been thrown up or before someone has talked to them. So I at least wanted to mention, you know, because there are one-way pools. I didn't speak to all of them, but, um, so I, I, I feel like there's a way of getting at the end goal because I agree, there's a need. I just don't think that this is going to solve the need. And I also don't think that two and a half million is going to do anything that you guys want to do. And it's going to create a, an okay aquatic center. It's not going to create what everybody's dreaming for. And it's going to be all the way out of the interstate. And if we think this is the last ask for funds, we're fooling ourselves. There's no way, there's no way that there's not going to be requests to come back for more. I don't think it's doing what we want to do. And, and look at, I mean, the people who've been pushing for Aquatics Center all along hate the idea, which tells me something in my mind. Um, I don't disagree that there is a need to help our kids and families get together and do, you know, whether it's camaraderie, whether it's, um, learning to swim, that is not, I'm not denying that. I just don't think that this solution will work. And I feel like it's one of those, just like I said with downtown, like if you don't put enough money toward it, then you commit to fail. And I think we're kind of like trying to put something somewhere that is almost like we're, we're excited we have money and like, ooh, what can we do with it? But this just doesn't add up. I feel like it's, it's a poor investment.
So one thing I'll say is you have to schedule times of the live swim. So you're not going to be able to get, first of all, buttons of children into the pools like you're wanting to. So that, that would not be able to be accomplished. Just saying. As far as like, in, we all have different opinions up here, right? And one opinion's not right, and it's not wrong, it's just our opinions. Uh, but I can tell you, growing up here, um, which, I forget what the percentage of people that are, are on help of some sort in Middletown are. But when I was a kid in Middletown, there was nothing here to do. I'm thirty-one now. And we had to travel to, we went to Caesar's Creek and we went to, um, the YMCA in Fairfield or whatever, Bridgewater Falls. And this is something where there'd be something for children in Middletown to do during the summer, which are the most important months. And we do it, we don't do it, I don't know what that answer's going to be. But you can't put a cost on this. And I understand what you're saying, if you think that it's not going to be what we want it to be. Um, that's your opinion once again, but I think it will be. That's just my opinion.
Exactly. To, uh, to speak to what's available for kids and, you know. So when you were a kid growing up, we still had city pools, right?
No.
We had no city pools, are you that young?
I am.
I was a little younger.
That is, I'm sorry.
I have a little bit of perspective than you guys, which is the perspective of the people in Middletown now. My parents have the kids that, there's no destination to go here in the summer. At the end of the day, yeah, you can live here and all that, but don't you, there, you can't put a price on the ecosystem of a city. And I feel like that's what we're trying to do.
So I think we have put a price on that, that ecosystem.
Well, that's enforcement.
And it's thirty million dollars to fix the parks. When we did our Parks Master Plan, they told us it would cost thirty million dollars to get our parks to where they should be if we're making safety improvements and equipment improvements and all of these amenity improvements that they suggest for parks, which we have all over the city, which are under, underwhelming at best if you visit any of the city, you know, most of the city parks. We've been able to invest in a couple of them. But we have an, uh, an equally great opportunity, I think, to invest in the parks which serve all of the neighborhoods of Middletown. So if we're talking about the kind of money that can make an impact in neighborhoods, I just see that two million, two and a half million, and I think what a difference that could make in our parks if that amount of money was allocated into each of the neighborhoods. So, you know, I, I agree that we need things for families and kids, but we have an existing infrastructure in our park system that needs investment. And I see that investment as, at the moment, um, a higher priority than creating a. And I see that investment as, at the moment, a higher priority than creating a new asset that, to the mayor's point, will probably require continued investment. You know, obviously they would maintain it and do those sort of things, but to believe that they're not gonna have some sort of mechanical malfunction that's gonna cost more money than they're able to and willing to invest in this, I don't know. You know, do we, could a city like Middletown benefit from having an aquatic center? A hundred percent. But right now, I just see so many things that have seen disinvestment for so long that need investment. And, and I, you know, in my mind, I prioritize those things a little bit higher.
And that's not unreasonable. So I'd ask a couple of questions. First of all, do you believe that this can somewhat be an economic benefit to the city? The second is.
In the location, I just don't, I mean, what kind of economic drivers can be when it's?
Is there a cost on changing the perception of what this town looks like from an outside?
You're saying that the people from outside of Middletown are gonna be the ones who come in and use our aquatic center?
I believe that somewhat.
And what kind of revenue generation does that create?
Here's the thing, let me, let me.
But you can't put the price.
Why does everything have to be about revenue? Can't we ever do something nice for our community? Everything's like, listen, y'all are that.
$300,000 into our parks she just talked about?
I have a perception that you guys don't have. I have three kids, I have three great kids here. You can laugh all you want. We leave Middletown to go swimming or go to a water park. So $10, we get out of Miami's bird and go to Oxford.
Exactly.
Because there's nothing here to do.
Most people don't.
That's an elitist list is what that is. That's an elitist list. It's actually exactly what that is. We're not looking at anything to help our community now. Our kids kids on the street, everything is about what we do to get money back. Everything's not about money and government. Government's about people.
Putting $30,000.
I mean, it's like, no, and all I'm saying is, I'm not saying you guys are wrong, but you guys are dismissing it right off the bat. I literally talked to 500 or more people about this water park, whether it's down Douglas Smith out there, people want something for their kids to do, guys.
I hear you there.
The root is missing. Well, it doesn't have return investment. Everything's not about money. I want to give a million dollars to the store because it's the coolest thing around here. But you know what the thing about the store is? You have to pay to go to conference here. I know it, I know. And I pay to eat at the Swire or Miss J's. Not everybody can do that, guys. And the Y state has told us you don't have to have a Y pass to get into this aquatic center. You don't have to have Y packs. Now, the location, I don't love the location. I'd rather be somewhere down in our city somewhere, but good luck finding three or four acres to build a water park home down here. We don't have it. All I'm saying is don't dismiss Zach because he's got ideas and that's what it's been. It's like, we, and I harp on this all the time, we feel a little bit different. That's all I'm saying. I didn't have the money to go to Wildwood or Fort Hill like I have now. Not everybody has that. You have to look at it from the entire community perspective, not just our perspective. That's all I'm saying. I get passionate about it because I've heard this crap from the city, from city managers and councils for years. Our city's a poverty city, man.
Which is why we are trying so hard to put money in that can come back into the city.
Not everything has to be about that though, Mayor.
Which is why the parks is also, this is a park. All you're putting up there is a line item for parks, but it's creating a new one.
We have nothing like that in Middletown. There's nothing like an aquatic center. If we have nothing like that, you can put all the flashbacks you want, it's not a pool or a water in there.
We also have rundown parks.
We do have four whole parks.
We have rundown parks and.
But that's, well, that's not, that's not an argument you're willing to die.
No, I'm just saying, if I'm prioritizing how we're spending the money, the parks is, for me, important because it's important for neighborhoods, it's important for kids. That's what I'm, I don't wanna get, I don't, I don't want there to be some confusion that I don't think we should invest in our youth and in things that are available today.
No, you do not say that, Mike. I agree.
So I just want to be very clear about that.
You're, you're, you're probably, maybe we're trying to the parks on that.
I also think that it's important that we recognize that the city is investing a lot of money into the community center. And the community center isn't on this list. If we can give an extra two and a half million dollars to the community center, I mean,
You can't say it's on the list.
I'm saying it's not on this list. But there are things that, there are assets that the city already owns. They could 100% use more investment.
Does the community center have a pool?
No, like for two and a half million dollars, couldn't it?
Then you're gonna run it.
But they're not running. We would pay to operate that at that point. That's what I'm saying, because that's our building. So the point is, is this is something we don't have to foot. And I keep hearing, well, there's gonna be costs down the road, remind me, but how about construction? We ride it up. We have lawyers. They can ride it up, but we don't cover any costs like that. I mean.
And they're gonna gain all these Y passes and then if they can't operate anymore, they're gonna lose all these memberships, which is financially not good for them.
And this is not, the aquatic center plan is not perfect. My goodness, it's not. We know that. But I'm saying, I don't wanna just dismiss it until we, I've said, we look at.
I'm not saying dismiss it, but I do think, given all of the other things that I feel are more immediate, that we, already city-owned assets that need that investment. I'm not saying that we don't ever build an aquatic center. I'm just saying that this allocation at this time isn't something that I'm necessarily in support of. Not to say that it can't happen.
Let me ask you this. If we dismiss this today and we walk away from it, because I've said all along, I'll go for, I won't argue if council wants not to do it, then we won't do it. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna paddle over if the council doesn't want to do it. But what would we do with that 2.5 million? If we disrupt that, what would we do with it?
I mean, I'm in support of what the mayor has said, that we need to pad that 481 more than is allocated on this list. So for me, it gets set aside and, and
Set aside.
And that's something that, that's something that, that creates.
For the downtown, just for the water.
No, I'm saying that it creates a buffer for something that might, something else that might come up. I just, I don't feel 100% comfortable with that amount of money at this time for an aquatic center.
But you're comfortable, you just wanna put it as a buffer in case something else happens.
I just don't.
That's a burning a hole in our pocket mentality though. If we're like, we got it, we gotta spend it and we like this idea. I.
I mean, are we gonna need more for the buffer tank?
Well, because what we do have to spend, we have, the government has given us.
How are we gonna need more for this, that, or is that for?
We have, we have one year to earmark it. One year. Or 2024, for two years, okay? So we have two years to earmark it and then three years to spend it?
Or somebody have a.
So we just keep it there, but the earmark is the important part, because we have to know by then what we're gonna do. So basically what I'm hearing is, is going back, we're gonna put 3 million in downtown RFQs, put another couple million in that buffer in case. So all of our ARPA money pretty much is being spent on downtown RFQs.
No, I'm not saying to keep.
You said, you said.
The buffer is not specifically for downtown. The buffer is, whenever comes up in the next two years, something could come up in three months.
The two buffers we've discussed are both downtown.
Yeah.
No, because we've talked about one, we have a Middletown event center. What if we need more, I mean, I, what if the, what if the project for infrastructure out at Union Road needs more money? I mean, I'm just, those, and those are the first two items on our list and they're on the other side of town. So it's not all downtown. It's, it's not. And, and maybe there's some way that we can find other money to fund an aquatic center that's not part of this pool. I don't, I mean.
And I'm jumping over quick. This is, looks like I'm gonna make a nobody happy. I'm firmly in the middle, which is the worst place to be on council. My thought is, I got a lot of thoughts. 2.5 probably doesn't get it done. I think it underbuilds what needs to be built. We'd probably need 3 million dollars. For me, I put a couple of projects above it. I put the entertainment center, I put downtown RFQs, and I put the education hangar above it. What I, I'm probably not prepared to make a decision on the aquatic center today. I feel like I need more information on what's the final financial, financial package for the East End project. I need to know what can public works do for downtown layout and infrastructure, just outside of the 3 million? If we can get to what the developer needs outside of that, then I would be prepared to come back and revisit the aquatics discussion and say, hey, maybe we have 2.5, but we're gonna need the Y to come up with another 500,000. Not saying that would be my decision at the end. I need to know these other questions, but I'm also saying this is, it is the type of proposal I would consider where they own it, they manage it, they maintain it, and the city just kind of has, has helped them with the bricks and mortar and has input on what the cost would be. Again, I'm probably letting everybody down, which is such a great place to be. But I need to know answers to those other three things before I can say yes or no to the aquatics, because like I said, I have three other big items above it.
And I respect that, 100%, I do. And that's an honest answer. I just, I agree with Zach when he said a couple of weeks ago, we don't do this now if we don't want to have it. So we're not gonna put money back into it here. We're just not. I know this city and I know this council and that ain't happening. It'll be something else comes up, something else comes up, and I just, I've heard this for years. And if we don't do it, let's just say, no, we're not gonna do it. I mean, really?
What's the problem with, he said that people can't afford memberships. What's the problem with subsidizing those pool memberships for those families that can't afford it?
For one Fort Hill, for one pool, for town of $50,000.
For Sill and the two waters.
The water, that's.
It's not in the water, it's inward.
Which they also operate your route.
Well, you know, we can't, they can't get citizen comments, never mind. I'll say something, you can't. Because it's a park, it's a water park, it's an aquatic center, it's not a city.
But it's not just that they can't afford a pool membership, it's that we want something more.
The reason the pool, I always, I always hear about the pools closing, and the reason the pools closed, and I hope the city manager backs on this, because he was here when this happened. Everybody's like, we closed the pools because nobody was coming, and some of that is true. But we closed the pools for the city to take care of. There were junk, there were garbage, you know, painted, the concrete was busted, the pools were leaking. That's what happened. The pool services, the pools didn't work before.
Because they're expensive to maintain.
They are expensive. Those, we're not maintaining this. That's my whole point. We're not maintaining this aquatic center. We're not paying for operations.
Until we are.
Until we are, but.
It is.
And what would happen scenario? What would happen if 10 years down the road, they have a big expense that they can't afford? Is it that they close it? And so we spent two and a half million dollars on something that they couldn't afford to, that they couldn't afford to repair?
And I understand that. What happens 10 years down the road if the interstate, the project that it does comes through and we waste all this money? We can whet everything up there. We can whet every item up there. Every item. What if Butler Tech hangar fails and people don't come to go to school there? We can put 500,000 on it. We can whet everything on that list. If we decide what it is, we're not gonna accomplish anything. I just believe, and it doesn't mean, doesn't mean I'm right. I could be the all-in-one, I could be the moron on council who says sometimes money doesn't count for everything. We have to do something nice for our people. And that, that's just how I feel. I feel strongly about it. If we choose not to do it, we don't do it. But please don't tell me that we'll put it aside and maybe do it later, because that will never see it again.
Oh, and Rodney, that's why I think investing in the parks is, and I'll just keep saying it, I'm gonna keep saying it, I'm gonna say it every single time the, you know, we've got extra money, the parks need the money. And that is, and that's maintenance that we've been delivering, we're just as small.
And I love that about you. We talked about that. We should, I wish we had money to put 10 million in parks right now, put stadiums in.
Yeah.
And, but we don't. And that's the thing. So that, that's just not how I feel. Doesn't mean that I'm mad at anybody. I'm passionate about it because I just, I'm based on experiences growing up. That's what I'm based on. Maybe I'm too emotional about it that way, but it's not anger, it's passion. And I just, I would love to see us do something. I don't see anything up there that some kid, he's gotta ride his bike somewhere because he don't have ride or a single mom house that he can go to.
Community center, first thing, first thing.
You're gonna ride a bike from Manville to. You're gonna ride from Creighton to.
They can ride their bikes to the parks.
The body system that they have committed to for the community center, it was the first thing, first of all, I wanted to make sure that people remember, the first thing we allocated money for, as a council, no question asked, the community center. So don't say that we're.
But we also bought when they asked for money for a gym and said, we don't wanna do that.
Oh, we approved the gym. Did we not approve it?
With a lot of argument. I'm not gonna go.
Okay, five yes, we had a vote for the gym.
Oh.
Let's move on, right?
Yeah, I don't, what do you wanna do in the fall?
I'm fully supportive of money in the parks. I, and this just seems like a bad. I don't know. It's a bad vision.
I know.
It's not, that's the thing. This is not.
Our city is not, is not this.
It is though. If we're responsible for taxpayer dollars, we have to think of it that way.
Oh, that's unfortunate. That's unfortunate.
The parks, what, if I, if I say, scratch that, put parks up there, what's the, what's the bad thing about that? What's the downfall?
To give money to parks?
Yeah.
Change the aquatic center line item to parks.
How, what's the, what's the, I don't.
Where is that how to invest in?
Because it's not a new asset. Now we're improving what we have. And I don't, I guess, I don't understand the argument of we need a three-month out of the year item that is in one place in a city.
If you wanna use that as a business, then the more we put in our parks and all these different things, all the new things we're gonna buy, that's maintenance, which is a drain on a city. So if we wanna talk about.
We already spent this maintenance. We're not.
Well, we're not. We're gonna have to.
But that's sick and critical, because we're talking about business, business, but yet we lose hundreds of thousands on the airport every year and we keep throwing money at the airport. We lose money every year, taxpayer dollars. We get crushed every year at that airport, but yet we just keep throwing money at it. Is that good business?
No.
But we lose. It's like, it's like we're just picking shit and just, you know, it's. I knew I should say goodbye.
That makes a point that we have a lot of city-owned, I think it makes a point that we have a lot of existing city-owned assets. And, and I think it's important that we, that we recognize.
This would be an asset that would not cost us money.
We obviously don't have to vote for this, so Michael's right.
If you guys wanna listen to it halfway, I'll support you.
No, put it, put it aside.
I'm not, you know what, hey, if it makes people happy and it's an emotional thing.
This is not an emotional.
It is for me, but for the community, it's not.
Right.
If we look at, let's compare this to Holiday Inn Block, which you know, I have a hard time supporting. Let's just be clear, okay? $245,000 for something that's similar, similar amount of months in a year, two and a half million. Where, can we get a win there? And, and, and it's, it's the same concept, right? We're basically doing the same thing, giving people an asset that they wanna go to, but look at this cost.
The hoopla also allows Middletown City School Centers to come and field trade for free and gives them thousands to come. The hoopla also combines a pilot Middletown, which brings thousands and thousands of people into Middletown to make us a December, Christmas place to be. That's how I look at that. Now, if you guys wanna vote for that, I get it, that's fine. But the hoopla's more than that. And I know, I can tell you, my granddads vote for free with their school. They do a lot of good things.
I'm getting at that it's a similarly positive item on there that we can give in our city if we're looking to do that and.
If you don't think if that aquatic center's there and you drive a developer past it and they, they don't care, they don't, they're not gonna wanna put Middletown in there because that's there, that's not gonna help make a decision for them? Especially when we're putting a million dollars in infrastructure almost, right up the road from that. If you think they're not gonna care about that, if that's not a quality of life that develop, you don't, you don't agree with that? What's your experience in development?
I don't.
Is that for a destination property?
I don't believe that that aquatic center is gonna have to make someone decide they wanna put a development.
Well, no one thing is gonna make you decide, but it's another community asset.
It looks like, it looks like to put it in the buffer, really. I mean, because we're not gonna follow it today, so if we don't do it, we'll at least it aside and we have that push aside. That's just my opinion.
So I will say why SNAP and honestly, we kept this in here because we thought it was important. We didn't put this in here because we thought it'd be a hot, touchy subject, believe it or not. We did it because we felt it's important that, that, we see it as a destination location. This is not just a swimming pool. It's, it's a water park that has features to it that can make it a destination location. And that was a large part of the reason. The other reason is our opportunity to partner with the YMCA to make this a success. They're gonna operate it. While, while pools and Nathan, you've been involved in them in cities all across Ohio, why, why most facilities like this failed is because the cities aren't good operators of aquatic centers. The YMCA is. It's, it's a large part of what they do. And so, as I said, a destination location, the operation is done by those individuals who do it on a day-to-day basis, can make it successful. And the other reason is, and I wanna make sure everybody understands everything, my goal as city manager is to make us one Middletown. Not a north Middletown, not south Middletown, not east Middletown, not west Middletown. We're one Middletown. We're not putting something in because it's on the far east side or south side or the east side or the west side. You know, we want everybody in Middletown to be able to use everything in Middletown. And one thing we did know about this, that. And one thing we did know about this, that it was, it, there will may be a challenge for some kids to get to it, but we're going to come forth with a plan to, to alleviate that. We'll look at the bus system, we'll get with the block, what can we do to make it easier to transport all kids in Middletown to this facility? We'll look at our bus system, it's a lot easier, it's funny, I, I heard it come out and I, and I started to laugh, he said about, get, get in your bike and drive to the park or the, me and the wall, I get the Ford bike. But, so, you know, transportation today is a lot easier than it was when most of us were kids. My point of this rambling is, you know, I, I hope everybody sees this as a project for all of Middletown, not simply because it's out in the far east end. And just like the community center, the downtown, it, this is for all of Middletown, not just for one particular part of Middletown. So with that, my recommendation is, we, we, we keep it there for now. We'll, we'll talk more because I think Councilman Moon brings up, we need to make sure that these numbers are nailed down. So I say we continue to talk, we know this number's set out there aside for the aquatic center, um, and, and.
I have one other comment, I made my position clear of what I'm prepared to do today or not.
I know you're not.
Sure, I'm not ready to make a decision today, that's what I'm prepared to do. But I would say, you know, this has been done before, you know, to the, to the mayor and Ms. Nanny's point about there's going to be under asked by him ten or twenty years, I mean, Huber Heights did this for their wives, the Kroger Aquatic Center, I believe. They do it in Fairfield, it was not supported by the city, I think there's other models that will be, the local Y could look at other people and say, have they done this, has it, has it been successful, have they had huge shortfalls in your five, ten, fifteen, or twenty? So, it's not like we're inventing a new, this wouldn't be inventing a new idea. So the east, I can tell you this for a fact, this is what I, but the east belt and Y is having the two slides in place right now. And from what I understood, the way Todd explained it to me, was they did not ask the city for any ask on that, they took care of that. So that's actually to that point, that's one thing that I was like, long-term sustainability, that's what we want to do, everything up here, we want to make sure everything we invest in, obviously there's a what if, but we want to make sure it's all here in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, that's what's important to me.
It is, and there's no right, and I want people to understand, you know, the thing about council, we all get along, these are spirited discussions, we don't, we like each other, but we have to have these talks. And I respect the mayor and my position, that they could be right, I could be wrong, and, but that's what we have, that's what we're here for. We're all like to represent people that come to us, and we obviously have different people come to us, and that's what happens. But they bring in good points, and I can't argue all their points because some of them are right and some of them I think are not, so it just depends.
Well, you made a little laugh, but like, Rodney and Zach and I, or Lemon and Monica and I are with each other on this one, I mean, let's just have a look.
I'm just here for the parks.
We're all, yeah.
I'm here for the parks, I'm here to, I want to put money in the parks.
With that said, and it, it should be noted that we've left the funding for the parks in our capital improvement. We might have to discuss with Ben and his crew about what specifically in the parks we could use up, a bit of ARPA dollars to work, it might, it might be.
And I think they're safe. Lighting alone, lighting alone in our parks could probably eat up that amount of money, making them safe for kids, you know.
Absolutely.
Safe, making our parks safe could eat up two and a half million dollars.
And that's, and that's part of the immediate needs that we've identified in the Park Master Plan that we are covering with public, uh, community better, capital improvement dollars.
You see, Monica, that's something I can't argue, you're right, is that, that way?
And then all money, all money that could be set aside in capital improvement can put swings, you know, actual swings on our swing sets and, you know, improve, improve the, uh, you know, amenities at our parks, that's what our capital improvement should be taking care of. Spend that two and a half million dollars on safety and put even more in on infrastructure in those parks. And I just, yeah, I, I just, I have a hard time looking at that number and not thinking that it should go towards parks.
I understand, and I respect that.
So we agree to table the two point five for right now?
Yeah.
And, and this one made a good point, if you just said, yeah, how fortunate are we that we, that we're in a position right now where we can have a discussion like this? That we even have money that we can put towards something, so, good point, like, let's, yeah.
Okay, so we got two choices here, we can move on, or we can take a break, let everybody use the restroom, and then come back and at eleven o'clock, we'll have to open up. The, the aggregation thing shouldn't take us five, ten minutes at the voting.
We all need like five minutes more than more.
That's an hard thing, I'm getting a lot off.
We're.
We'll take it out.
Were you, were you bored when Middletown had an airport?
We're talking that.
I say, I swim, the city's swimming, it's upset, so I'm like.
What's the city of Port?
Right, we're back at eleven, with many people around, I didn't believe about.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Okay, well, it turns, we reconvene at eleven. Okay, we're, uh, and that's technically where you convene the ARPA discussions, only to go to a recess for those. Do we have to vote to recess yet or recess?
Your party.
Okay, so we'll move to recess the ARPA and capital discussions for the moment, and we will call to order the Middletown City Council's special meeting. Uh, which is where, I'm throwing my, hang on. Second special meeting for Saturday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, for the purpose of, where's my, there's another one, right? Okay, thank you all. Can we say what the purpose is for this, when I call it to order, because, I guess for the purpose of the governmental electric aggregation program. Pause it, Ms. Nanny, can you call the role for us?
Ms. Nanny?
Yeah.
Mr. Moon?
Yes, here.
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Mayor Conry?
Here.
Mr. Farrell?
Here, I guess.
Your role calls right, okay. Okay, um. Yoda or Paul or someone.
Yeah, I can explain. So the purpose of this meeting is to.
We need to, we're seeing.
Oh, we need to see a file, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still looking at this. Okay, yeah, so we are seeing a file for special meetings, do we have a motion to your city fathers, document this.
Seven.
Second.
Okay, can you just call the role?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Mayor Conry?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
And I'll be casting around this special meeting, documents that are ready. Okay.
Okay, the purpose of this meeting is to request that council that the call question of the energy, energy aggregate gas and electric program be moved and put on the special ballot in May. What that would do is, uh, it would just speed up the processes of passing on an energy aggregate program to our citizens and who will be able to vote on, on if Middletown should enter into the energy aggregate agreement. Energy Alliance, who has given us a couple of presentations, uh, has stated that this could result in a savings to our, each household anywhere from ten to twenty dollars per month. Uh, if we put it on the May ballot, uh, the cost for us putting it on the May ballot would be sixty, somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars, which Energy Alliance Incorporated has agreed to share the cost with us. So it essentially would cost us somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars to put this on the, on the.
And the result would be approximately over two, if I were to do the math, about two million dollars of savings right out.
For every household, or not for every household, or the entire city of Middletown.
If you look at an aggregate savings for a citizen, around two million.
Wait, question, so. Ten to twenty dollars per month for savings? Correct, what you're saying?
Ten to twenty, it could result in ten to twenty dollars per move, per household that participates.
But moving this up costs thirty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Which is six hundred dollars per resident of Middletown?
Well.
Am I doing the math wrong here?
Yeah.
Like, like four vessel places.
Okay, also common.
Yeah, like, so essentially, across the entire city, our citizens will pay about two million dollars in six months. And it's going to cost us thirty thousand to do it. Is that, I mean.
It's a cost of like eighty.
It's a rough estimate, about one million.
Yeah, the rough estimate I hear from there is, is quite possibly greater than one million dollars.
And so that's assuming everybody takes advantage of it, if everyone doesn't, then the number goes down.
But if this vote were to happen in November, or we didn't have a call special election, or pile a special.
Because we are paying for all the stuff that is going on the ballot in November, this wouldn't cost us anything.
Wouldn't cost us anything, so.
So that's the real question before you, is do you want to put it in the November ballot, or do you want to do it in May? If you want to do it in May, the city has to pay the entirety of the cost, which is fifty to sixty grand. Duke is willing, or not Duke, excuse me, Energy Alliance, I deal with Todd, um, I have it a lot, but, um, you know, they're willing to pay for half of that, so do you want to put it on now, and the residents collectively might save up to a million dollars between now and then?
Does this, does this city only pay on the Middletown ballot?
In May, as of now, unless somebody files something for February first.
And that's the deadline, why, why discuss that now, is if we want it to be on the May ballot, the deadline to submit legislation toward elections is February first. We're already here today, so we thought, let's talk about it, if you want to spend twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to put it on the ballot in May, save residents collectively roughly a million dollars.
What did they tell us could be the savings as far as having something actually affect, you know, affected in August? You know, if this passes in May, or if it's being affected in January, February, like, what's the real savings?
When would it start, you're saying?
He said it's going to start, it's going to take like six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to take, because we've got to get certification to be able to participate in this from, from, uh, PUC.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, is, is there real savings to be saved?
You're probably more going to save in twenty twenty-four than you are in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it'd be six, it'd be six months, they said, it's going to, it's going to have the same like.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more probably back, than just jump starting the savings.
Well, I think that the highest months of service are going to be your winter months, so this would get to our residents before the winter months of twenty twenty-three.
I think it's going to. Yeah.
Which is why I support this.
But yeah.
I support it anyway. Okay.
Whereas it would be, it wouldn't be hitting until spring if we waited until later, and by that time, people's energy bills are, are already seeing the reduction, yeah.
Five citizens make fifteen dollars.
What if you spent my numbers, what'd you do?
And is there any concern for the likelihood that it will pass on the ballot in May versus, you know, since we've got a special election, is there any concern?
I asked that question to Energy Alliance and they said, uh, not really, but that generally, uh, they have more success in special elections. They have one other community in this area that will be doing the same thing as we are.
Also, huh, is that your question?
How, how long does this lock us into an agreement with them?
What's that?
This is, what's, I assume there's some kind of contractual written agreement with them for the next amount of time?
There is agreement, um, honestly, it's no money to the city that's paid for that, um, and there are some termination provisions that are in there, but.
Well, well, it's, it's eventually rates drop low, or they're going to guarantee enough people to get out of it at that point.
Yeah.
He saw, I asked him that last week, it said it was a two or three.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was.
Oh, okay.
Because I know different cities have done this, I know the Tampa Millhouse, and they've gotten out, and it's.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Todd, you, you generally can sign two or three here if you choose.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too concerned with the termination provisions that are in there, again, it's not a, um, it's not a contract that we're actually paying money to them with, um, I think we'd be written out there, I'm not concerned with it.
Loose contract.
There are any other questions, we've been told, I know there's three separate legislative items that are associated with that. Okay, well, Lemon, I guess, I think you want to read and take care of the orders and things.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I'm happy to, so obviously there's three legislative items all associated with this that are on the agenda for each of which are proposed for passage if it's emergencies as such that we can get on the ballot at the time. So before I get started, I just request council to pass the motion waiving the provisions pertaining to second readings and the effective dates on emergency legislation.
I would move that the, I'm trying to say ordinance number.
Can.
Uh, that ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero four, ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero five, ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero six, um, be considered as an emergency and read one time only, and to waive the charter provision requiring thirty days to act.
This is technically our second reading, correct? So we're waiting the thirty days to act.
Did you, sorry, so that's my mistake, did you do the first reading, I know Brody covered the meeting.
We did a first reading, but it was for a different date and different, so this is, I would just consider this.
Yeah, yeah. I would categorize this, if you didn't do the reading before, even if you did, that was for the legislation for Middletown.
For November, yeah, that is, the legislation is different.
Okay, so it's changed now, because you have.
I would, exactly.
Okay. So.
Sorry.
Ms. April, can you call the role?
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Mayor Conry?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Great, so first items, ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash O four, an ordinance authorizing the city of Middletown, Ohio to establish a governmental electric aggregation program within the city's corporate boundaries and directing the Warren County Board of Elections and Butler County Board of Elections to submit the question of the city's authority to aggregate to the city's electors for the May second, twenty twenty-three special election and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Ms. April, can you call the role?
Mayor Conry?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Second item is ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash O five, an ordinance authorizing the city of Middletown, Ohio to establish a governmental, a government or natural gas aggregation program within the city's corporate boundaries and directing the Warren County Board of Elections and Butler County Board of Elections to submit the question of the city's authority to aggregate to the city's electors for the May second, twenty twenty-three spec, special election and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Ms. April, can you call the role?
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Mayor Conry?
Yes.
Third ordinance is ordinance number O twenty twenty-three, catch six, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Energy Alliances, Inc. for energy consulting and natural gas and or electric aggregation services and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Ms. April, can you call the role?
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mutersfall?
Yes.
Mayor Conry?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Thank you, very interesting, we will get in that, work out quickly if, if that saves our citizens, in theory, has a potential to save our citizens, I don't know much, so, appreciate it. Okay, um, with that, we will, uh, close the special meeting. And we can reconvene our ARPA discussion, return from recess, for that, because we already, we already, we all said that, right? Okay.
Morning, council. Glad to see you again. I think.
You can say it.
Uh, so, moving forward, the next item on the potential use agenda is the Butler Tech hangar. Uh, if you recall, January third, uh, Superintendent of Butler Tech, John Graf, gave, gave a presentation on the Butler Tech hangar. Uh, Butler Tech received, uh, seven million dollars for a, a aviation hangar, and, uh, Butler Tech is putting some funds into it, and he has requested up towards two million from, uh, the city of Middletown towards that use. After discussion with several, uh, staff members, council members, we laid it on a figure of five hundred thousand dollars as a potential use of our ARPA proposals.
I, I will go ahead and talk.
Uh, as I previewed earlier, this is one I feel strongly about, um, I could more into it, um, I mean, if this isn't the premier technical school in the state, it's one of, and I think I can say the same thing about In-Nation. Employers that come to town, the, the number one concern is, where's my workforce going to come from? This is a way to train the workforce. Secondly, um, I, I view, I would frame this similar to how I framed the community center when we had that discussion a couple of weeks ago. This is a twelve to fourteen million dollar facility that if we can put, you know, seven. This is a twelve to fourteen million dollar facility that if we can put, you know, seven hundred and fifty or a million dollars into, we're gonna have that investment return to the community, you know, tenfold almost. So I think it's a wise investment, uh, no matter where it is. So I would advocate for more. And what, the way I would pay for that, as I know we're gonna have a discussion about who's going to be paying for that, for that tax, I would be willing to entertain that and move that two forty-five into the Butler Tech hangar.
I know, I'm definitely supportive of what I'm talking, what they're doing and I think they're getting somewhere with this hangar and this use. But so far, it is a speculative building, uh, it doesn't have set use. And I, I think a lot of, they're saying that industry needs these, uh, these jobs and to train people up for them, then I think industry needs to pay for some of this building, which is how a lot of this is done. Is, you know, the bigger companies say, hey, I need a pipeline. Um, and I think that we need to see some private investment into something like this because otherwise it's just government getting plugged in without it being driven by the private sector. So I feel like it's a twofold. If private industry, private industry is willing to put money into it, one, they're putting money into it, but two, they're also buying into the programming that's associated with it. And three, they're getting a pipeline. And so I, I haven't seen any private dollars be committed from companies into this hangar and I would need to see that before I know to spend any money of our citizens' tax pay dollars on it.
And they still have the opportunity to do that because they're still short, even if we.
Right, but I'd like to see that first, like I think, I think we're the easy acts, like, hey, there's ARPA dollars. And, and I appreciate everything that I'm doing and and Butler Tech is doing, I'm not, I'm not, it's just, we are the easy acts, right? So it's easier to come, city council, you know, there's money there, I just think that I have seen the effort made to go to private industry after this. We are already committing land for it and I, I just think the project also has potential for greater success with the project.
I agree with the mayor a little bit, I, I personally think this hangar's going up either way. For me, I'd be willing to invest, I, I would like some type of financial investment in it because it is an asset for the city.
It's not, we own a lot of the building.
Right, okay, sorry, I, it's not.
It's own the land.
We own the land, I just want to make sure that's clear.
I, I guess I've, I mean, an asset as.
Yeah, yeah.
So as far as training the workforce, what percentage of that workforce is actually gonna stay here for? That's, that's kind of my first question, or something, not necessarily a problem, but I don't think it's going to benefit that many people that are gonna stay here long term. Sort of my second thing is like, if we want to talk about jobs and investment and that type of creation, I, I asked them how many jobs is this actually going to create? And it looks like it's about seven full-time jobs. So on their two million dollar, um, ask originally, I mean, it would take us like two hundred years to make that money back, which that's not a very good investment there. And I do think we need to support this and everything, but I, I would be okay with two hundred thousand, that's kind of the number that I had in my mind. I, I understand why you feel the way that you do and I understand why you feel the way that you do. And I'm not saying I'm right here, I, I do think we should, there's, when a city's behind something, it's going to go better. That's sort of what I've learned so far in this, but I don't think that I can give them five hundred thousand, I've seen what their books are, how much money they have. And I don't think that they're going to say, no thanks, county, we're gonna just wait on your seven million dollars. I, I don't think they're gonna do that and, and we have to use this money to help our citizens. That those are, that's where our fiduciary responsibility is, it's not training the workforce for counties that are, you know, Northern Kentucky and Dayton, our, our responsibility is to help our citizens here and I think that's where that money needs to go.
Do we not also, um, apply for state funds for this hangar? So we, we gave, we gave up, basically it was an opportunity cost, we applied for state capital funds for only two different items, I believe it was. And this is one of them that we got for, so we have put in already opportunity costs into this that we could have asked for funds elsewhere. So we essentially have brought eight hundred thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to the table on this that we couldn't have asked for funds from the state elsewhere, so.
I would just add that I don't think he gave his whole picture at the council meeting, because when we were, uh, we weren't there at the chamber meeting last week, he did say that we anticipate, the county anticipates adding, um, tenants within the hangar. That could be small businesses, that would be employing people, so I think he said it was directly to Butler Tech employees, but then they also anticipate having space available for businesses within, within the building.
So he told me seven of thirteen and I was thinking that thirteen was potentially if they got these tenants and everything, and I, I could be, I could be wrong about that. Yeah.
And if we think about that, though, those are likely paying tenants, right, that they're gonna be able to imagine drawing in revenue from, and so there's a financial benefit.
I just think we're helping build them a building that's gonna help them and I don't really see much city return on it, honestly, I just don't.
I would like, I definitely want to partner with them, but there's no question.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, yeah.
I just don't know that it's worth our citizens' ARPA dollars to go with this when I think there's alternatives on these resources.
And I want to train our workforce, I, I do want to train the, the citizens of Middletown and surrounding, like, that, that is a priority and a goal of mine, but I don't know if there's any issues up to five hundred or seven fifty or whatever the dollar is.
So when we drag down seventy-five and look up at their facility in West End, you don't think, man, that'd be nice to be training our kids, keeping those kids in town?
But how many kids is this actually going to keep in town? What jobs are there?
I think if this hangar were to draw opportunity for other organizations and companies who want to locate in Middletown and adjacent to our airport, if the access to this workforce creates more opportunity for new businesses to, to look at our airport and say, this is attractive because I've got a workforce built in here. And I think that's where this creates that next opportunity for us to bring in these partnerships with corporations that would employ these people in Middletown.
I think though, kind of what I'm getting at is, I want to see some try, like some companies say, yes, we want to see this hangar, yes, we're committed to this, yes, we're gonna put some money.
Yeah, I have that, absolutely.
Then I can say, okay, let's maybe put some city dollars behind it, but I haven't seen any of that yet, but I just.
Is that putting the current performance force a little bit because does she, you know, is this the driver that brings those companies to town? Do we have enough existing companies that would utilize this, this workforce that are already or?
They're in, the, the right path, we're right in the airspace corridor, there are plenty of companies out there that if that's what we're building to, need to get on board, like, we've got to.
Giving them board just mean, hey, we're gonna commit to hiring your people or we're gonna commit to being your space?
I want to see some money.
Well, these people have, so, okay, for, my brother's in school for this exact thing, um, it's unclear. And every day, somebody walks in their classroom and he's got job offers and everything, he's still a year out from school being done, like, these people are not gonna have a hard time finding a job, there's, that's never.
Well, first of all, uh, what program are they putting in here? Because they don't have it. That's, so that's what I'm getting at, though, like, we're still in the spectrum.
And, and we'll make a good use of it, I'm, I'm not disregarding that. And I think that they will, like, they know, they, they run a great organization, um, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, it's not my problem here.
I think because it is still a little bit speculative, this five hundred thousand is something that I'm comfortable with earmarking through this. Obviously, we're not legislatively spending this money right now and probably won't until they get a little bit further down the road, so, I mean, just as a, as an earmark, I'm comfortable with this amount, knowing that it could go up or down. But that we want to commit to investing in this Butler Tech hangar project and invest in this project.
So if that's the case, of course, you're, because I imagine staff probably don't have a legislative item to put this money towards Butler Tech purely to.
How soon would that happen?
I think it'd have to go to the city.
That's the question.
They want, so they want to get going.
Yeah.
So they need that legislative commitment from us, how soon?
Yeah, they can, you have anything to?
I, I, I think they're gonna have plans and all their design ready bid for construction probably by the end of the second quarter.
And would this five hundred thousand dollar commitment be enough for them to get to that point? You know, they came and, they obviously asked for more than that, so are they gonna be able to come up with the rest of that funding source to get there if this is all we commit or, you know?
I have not asked that question.
Well, that's the game I'm playing right now, right?
Yes. I, yeah, I mean, the.
I mean, it's true.
The, the amount of money there, it considered a placeholder definite or anything in between, that's probably in the neighborhood of what it would cost to do site prep and do some utility tap and an extension to the pad.
So is it possible that they, they take this money that we commit to them and then they come back and say, all right, well, we've done all this and now, now this is our ask?
Well, then we'd say no.
They, anybody can do anything they want, right, at the end of the day.
I mean, that, any, realistically, obviously, they can't, they, Butler Tech is not, you know, they can't jump the fence and build anything or do anything or commit anything up until council were to approve a, a land lease in this range. Staff has always envisioned that, that land lease would, would also delineate what they're doing, the scope of what they're building, when the rent starts, starts coming due, what if any, you know, what, what if any monetary or other actual, you know, you know, things that the city as the landlord was going to do in partnership with the tenants, and so on and so forth.
Can you talk to us a little bit more about that land lease? And I mean, so if we're talking about, well, you know, the amounts of money that we're getting back on our investment, what, what does that land lease look like over time and how do we recoup this money in land lease? And, and you know, if it's not gonna be through payroll, is it, you know, is it possible that we can get it back through, through the land lease?
So what, so land lease verbally, what, what our discussions have been with the business manager for, uh, Butler Tech, um, is a land lease arrangement to where the city would be renting to Butler Tech the, the land that the building sits on. The building would be built and owned during, for the duration of the lease by Butler Tech. Um, at the end of the lease, typically on these land leases, there's usually one of two things that occurs. The tenant is able or required to demolish the building or the building becomes a landlord, in this case, the city's building an asset. And that's to be negotiated. But we're, we're, you know, we're recommending a market cap rate of about eight percent, which is usually kind of a golden grade for land leases. So what is that, so what we're meaning is that, um, the value of, of the land and the like, we're getting eight percent of it each year. We're looking at, you know, Butler Tech because of the asset and how it's, how it has to be on their books and the like, I mean, you're looking at a very long duration lease of probably fifty years. But over time, you're looking at, at getting back that, that value of the property.
So, so it's not a dollar?
No.
I was wondering that.
I mean, we're gonna, we gotta be careful about this piece because we're charging our citizens, what, a quarter million a year just to use the wellheads on the other side of the airport? Which, by the way, is totally jacked up and I'm not happy about, but moving on. If we, if we now value the land at that amount and we are gonna give Butler Tech an amount of land that's greater than that, the numbers aren't gonna match up, right, or lease rate, the land lease essentially on the wellheads is so high that now are we fighting up against, um, FAA regulations on the, uh, basically proportional land lease rates that we would have to be charging Butler Tech? Is that an issue? Has anybody thought about that?
I don't think it would be and we do have other leases out there that aren't for a dollar, remember, certain leases.
Oh, yeah, correct, we have land, and we also currently have a land, a land lease with one of the hangar.
Yeah.
So just another thought here, um, we believe what you're saying is true, that there is ample, we don't know the programming yet, we will, that there's ample need for, for, for the, uh, program. They're gonna build this somewhere, right? And I'm, I'm not suggesting we operate out of, out of fear or defensive posture, but county's giving these folks seven million bucks. County also owns an airport. And we think they're just gonna say, ah, well, we can't do it in Middletown, we're not gonna do it anywhere. No, I think the county would step in and say, why don't you build this at our facility or still keep the kids in Butler County, still do the same program you want? Because we've given you seven million bucks. I want to make sure we get this done, I'm filing a place order of five hundred thousand, I'll continue to push for more if we need more. But we shouldn't let this slip in our fingers.
I'd like to see them going after first the private stuff. Not, I'm not saying no at all, I just, the order of operations to me is off, like, I feel like we got the, we got asked first because it was.
The county guy asked us to put in seven million bucks.
Yeah, 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 um.
But they also put in seven million dollars to build it in Middletown.
What's that, right?
Well, we also got.
They, they put in seven million dollars to build it in Middletown.
Yeah.
They wanted to invest in Middletown, this is a part of it. And yeah, they had the option to pull it, it's somewhere else, but.
Just saying, if, if.
I'm not sure about the.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's not inconceivable, you know, Middletown lost projects other communities before, right, this wouldn't be the first time.
Right.
So it's not inconceivable to sit, for them to say, you know what, we just can't get there. Hey, Cali, can we put this somewhere else? Oh, guess what, we have an airport too. I'm just, it's, it's tough.
No, I, I'm.
So I would like to figure.
You're not wrong.
That's what I'm saying.
And I certainly don't want to lose the opportunity.
No, I don't think anybody would.
I'll give two fifty, that's mine. So, Rodney.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I understand what you're saying, power a hundred percent and definitely understand what the mayor's saying. Has the, is this a regional thing? Has other cities been asked to kick in also, you know, I'm just curious? Like Hamilton or Trenton or Monroe or are we just, they're just asking us to foot the bill? I guess that's my question, I, I don't know.
Us and then Butler Tech themselves.
Okay.
A state grant, state capital, and county.
Okay.
That's all I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I think we have a, a different opportunity to benefit from it than other cities would, certainly considering the amount of property out of the airport and surrounding the airport that could have the potential for.
Yeah, I mean.
For, for corporate, for other companies and other businesses to want to move in, so.
It would definitely be a catalyst for more development at the airport, that, I believe that, I hope that, I, I think that's what we're kind of hoping does, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So are we saying we don't want to make legislative action to move the money just yet, but we want to earmark it and wait? And at what, how long are we needing to wait?
I mean, if five hundred thousand dollars is what they need to, to proceed right now, I'm comfortable with putting the five hundred thousand dollars, he asked us for two million.
Yeah, they've not said that.
They're correct, right?
They've not said that five hundred is what they need to proceed, they've asked.
They wanted them to be two million.
Right, but they've not said this is what we have to.
Is it going, is less, is less than that, is this five hundred dollars gonna be, is it not enough for them to move forward though, like, I, I don't?
Well, and ask is a difference than, I don't, I think it was, they're asking for that, that doesn't mean that they're not gonna do the project if they don't get this. Now, an email to me, he did say, if we don't get said two million dollars, it runs the potential of delaying the product or project, et cetera, et cetera.
Change of size to the project.
Because they've got.
Or change, yeah, change the size.
Change the interiors on.
But that's sort of like what comes back to me is it's like, okay, so do they go from granite countertops to one grade below? Like, what does this extra million and a half dollars get? And I don't, like, have answers to that, so like, I don't, that's kind of my.
My understanding is it would be a difference of rooms.
And number of classrooms.
Right.
Do you guys remember, I, I heard he said at, at the meeting, I just don't recall and I, I don't have it in front of me, I was looking in my notes, um, how many Middletown students this would serve or that? You guys remember?
I think he said it would be proportionate, it would be proportionate to the number of Middletown students that they already have.
Are we talking hundreds, are we talking dozens?
Dozens, I don't.
I mean, you've got seven instructors there, I mean, how many?
No, he did tell us.
He did, and I, I don't have that.
I, I feel like two ninety-three years ago, was it something? Yeah, something to choose, if I'm not mistaken. But he didn't say it would like, if, if I'm not mistaken, don't hold me to this, but he said it wouldn't change much because they, they are already serving some of them in some capacity, don't hold me to that.
Yeah, I'll put them like others, I don't have it, I don't.
One hundred and thirty-one students.
And also, I'm not trying to beat Butler Tech up here, but that's not what I'm trying to come off as.
No, they're credible, they did a couple of things.
I, I have a note of one hundred and thirty-one point two six Middletown students, I'm not sure.
But the case had three percent, three percent, uh, or some, I feel like I remember that.
Okay, I, I done myself, I'm gonna.
Thirty percent of a certain number.
Yeah.
I think to Rodney's point, though, if we're training for the region, why isn't the, which I guess you could say the county commissioner money is, like, that's the region's money to us, but then it's unfortunate, we're left to.
I would just say we didn't have funds for Westchester's facility or Monroe's facility or any of the other Butler Tech facilities that serve our case target.
Did those cities put funds?
Did those cities put funds, though, that's?
I, I don't know, but.
I don't think they did.
And they, maybe they did, I'm just saying that we haven't, we're not, it's not a fair ask if we haven't done the same thing for a lot of those communities that have been in again or any of them. Some are town jobs, I guess they got something to stake in again, but they didn't get their four million dollars. Some are town jobs, I guess they got some to stake in again, but they didn't get their own dollars out of it.
So anybody know enough about the tech's financials to understand that they're truly in need of the money? Because I have no financial data whatsoever, which also doesn't make me feel great about paying.
I, I have financial data.
Yeah.
You've got.
It, it, are we looking at it in an overall scope of Butler Tech?
Well, I mean, the thing is like.
They're trying to get this program off the ground.
Right, it's all relative.
They could say, we've got zero dollars, this is a new program.
Exactly.
Sure. But from a whole business perspective, if they're setting high, a level, a big, a lot of capital somewhere, and they could choose to reallocate it towards Middletown, but are choosing not to, that's another stretch. You know me, I like the financials, I want to see why they need to ask. So where are we on that one?
I guess it's up to Rodney.
I mean, I see it as two, two right now.
I, I mean, everybody makes great points, it's part, I mean, it's, I don't know enough about it, I guess. I get what Tal's saying, I get what the mayor's saying, I get it. I mean, maybe it's something we could do like we did with the one before, and say, look, we set it aside and gives us some more time. Because I, obviously, everybody's got differences, but I, they all make good points. Nobody's wrong on the table. And that would hold on to it.
Just about as good as Tal's. Yeah. Just all keep it in the loop. I do think maybe some more information, or maybe another, another presentation from John would maybe help us make that decision. Obviously, understanding their financial situation a little bit better could help us make this decision. So, it, I mean, to me, it doesn't sound like we're quite ready for legislative item yet, but.
I want, I want to see what, what industry companies, who's he even talked to about this? And what are they, what are their thoughts? They so far have just seen it dripping from the government and Butler Tech and not from industry. And I'm sure he did talk to industry, but I'd like to see who he's talked to, what their presentation.
I'm just setting it aside for now.
I'm comfortable with five hundred, I'm comfortable with five hundred plus, but I, I think that in order to get this passed, we're gonna need to sit down with John again, have him come to city council, or in city managers, and, and make a, maybe a more compelling case for the two million that he asked for, and try to help us understand the, some of the financials, because it seems like there are some questions.
It's up to you, I'll put two fifty there, so it's up to you guys.
Is that laughable, though? I almost feel like, yeah, I don't, that's so low, from two million to two hundred fifty thousand, I feel like we're kind of slapping them in the face for doing anything. I.
Is, did you come up with two fifty because with the seven fifty, that brings us to a million total? Is that, where did you come up with two fifty?
I want to be, I want to be financially invested into it, but.
Do you think two hundred fifty thousand dollars is really being financially invested into it, or, you know?
Just, I mean, I do feel like we're seven hundred fifty thousand dollars financially invested, because if we had not made that state capital funding request from Butler Tech, we would have made it for something else. So that seven fifty would be in our community somewhere else, the state is definitely allocating, trying to be, you know, even, we would have gotten it for something. So that's where I feel like we, we have.
Well, if we got seven fifty and they asked us two, then a million, two fif, or two fifty would be fulfilling the ask. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure this.
That is why I thought if we could get the seven fifty, and the state got seven fifty, we were one point five of two million, and then you could probably figure out.
Yeah, additional.
That, that was my thought.
Well, if we want to hold off and we get information from their financials, I would like to see the, the different buildings that they've built in the last couple of years, what type of help they've had from the city that they've built in, or if they received any help, and these kinds of different things, so we can compare scope of project, that type of thing, then I'd, I'd be okay with it. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Paul's over there like, making this team work.
No, I'm.
That just means you're gonna have six years.
We'll do what you direct us to do. We'll go back and, and have some discussions with John, and see if we can't come up with some answers. We'll be, we'll just put that off to the side for now. So, we ready to move on? So the next thing on our agenda, and these shouldn't be too difficult, the next couple. Parks and recreation, non-capital, what the, what the ask is here is a hundred thousand dollars to put in the fund to allow us to move forward to do various projects in the park that are non-pro, non, non-capital. For example, have events like a couple of events we had last year, and to add more of them to, to do this year, such as the Fall Fest. Some various things, ideas we have in the park, what they, farmers market, food truck in the park idea. It's just gonna take some funds to be able to do these events.
I noticed that you added "and" rec, but we only have a parks department, we don't have a recreation department.
Yeah, there might be some recreational things we do, such as maybe little tournaments in the parks.
But I think this is something that sort of gets us back to a place where we're more, when we have a recreation department. And one of the things during the break, I was talking to Jack and Phillips about, is that it's all well and good to invest in our parks, but we need programming in our parks in order to make them attractive to the residents, and to make them something that people really want to visit and, and participate in. We can have beautiful parks, but if the kids aren't going, then we're not doing very well.
I was smiling there because I think Jack and Maggie, the only one who remembers the green boxes in the parks.
I, you know, they talk about them all the time, and in, in the park or meeting, they talk about the boxes all the time.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and I think that that's something that, I don't know if you would remember.
Did that go around the city?
That might fit before you give them that. Yeah, Rodney would probably.
No, but it was. It was way before that.
I think those were for my type of doing stuff.
No, the green boxes, it would have like, it would have like tennis balls, tennis rackets, basketballs.
Careful.
Green boxes in the park, and they have lots on them. And then some of this city would come along in certain hours, and kids could get a basketball or a soccer ball, and play in the park, and you have to return them back to the box, lock them. But the city provided that.
And, and we, you know, we're looking at doing some things, programs in the park where, okay, whatever, Midella Park, or whatever park, on Thursday, July fifth, we're going to have kickball with the firemen, and then we're gonna grill hot dogs, hamburgers, and get the kids out of their houses into the parks, get people more interested in their parks again, and do things all around the community.
Why don't you go to the city park and call it?
Well, now listen, we want a group, now listen, I got a great answer for that. We, we want a group. We want a group that can beat the kids in kickball.
I'll tell you what, the seven thousand, you can contest.
Recliner surfing, fire winner.
So, this line item is secret, this is programming, like, is that might be so.
Absolutely, keep that in programming.
And, and are we talking about that being spent over one year, two years?
Over one year.
Okay.
Twenty twenty, well, I guess that's a good question, and something I guess we really didn't think about. I think if we had funds left over in twenty twenty-three, we would roll them over into future years.
Because I would like to see a line item in annual budget that has city.
I hope to get there, if we figure out.
But we gotta kick it off somehow, right?
That's what.
I don't feel like a hundred thousand dollars is a lot to me.
To me, it's.
Like, almost like a drop in the bucket, but.
It's a start for us.
What, like, is that gonna buy, what is that gonna buy us? Like entertainment, parts and pieces for a event?
Supplies, material, parts, pieces.
Some of those which can be used in future years.
Yes.
Timber with hurting chairs and that sort of thing.
Looking at like April Town, or the earlier concert, of course, and some of the, you know, other small costs there.
Should we put more than that, or is it, I don't know.
How did that number come about, I guess, that would be?
Well, we just kind of looked at what we were spending in, in events so far with like the, what were some of the costs that the city helped out with in the concerts in Sunset Park? What we spent in the, we call it that, we had what, some estimated costs of if we did some things like the kickball and the lunch for kids in the park, and we just said, let's start small, go a hundred thousand.
How much did we spend last year?
I don't have the exact, it, it wasn't quite, it wasn't near a hundred thousand. I mean, for the fall event, I think maybe we spent twenty to thirty thousand.
Was that money being spent out of the.
Scott, we spent a significant, what's that?
Was that money being spent out of the contingent structure?
Yeah, and, and non-partmental funds. Scott, any idea what we did on the Sunset?
Well, I mean, that was more like capital.
And building stage and settling that.
Well, we did various things such as the, get the showmobile to places.
Right, that's true.
And pay the rent like on the showmobile, to downtown groups that wanted to use it.
So there were some in-kind costs?
Yes, there were in-kind costs.
I think the, the two things that you can draw on spend is economic development and parks. I mean, parks, which is so important, and I know what all this council creates, I mean, whatever, I know we got money, you're marketing capital, but they're just so important.
I'd do another fifty here, because if we don't use it this year, we're gonna use it at some point.
Well, if we're looking at ARPA dollars, and that's a hundred thousand, I mean, ARPA expenditures go through the end of twenty-six, so if we're wanting to use a hundred thousand dollars in one year, should we not say twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six? I mean, are we wanting to do that, or are we just trying to kickstart it so we get it into our budget?
We were just trying to kickstart it.
I'd like to see it kickstarted for at least two years, if we're gonna do it, but the other, okay, what, what else?
I think doubling that for a two-year budget is.
Well, the problem is you gotta have somebody go out every day, move up and do all that, so that's a whole employee out there.
Anyway, I'd like to see that.
Bring my security box.
Yeah, I think, well, if we're gonna stick all this money in our parks, which I know we're hoping to do, like, this is a great time to showcase them, like, we're approved.
Anyway, yeah.
I agree, much money we can give to the park, I mean, probably a lot for everybody.
And accessible from everywhere in town, and that's what would be an important part of, about investing in our parks.
And things.
They are located in our neighborhoods, if we want to kickstart a neighborhood revitalization, you know, effort, it starts with our parks, for me.
So we're gonna fund this for another year?
I think we should do two hundred thousand over the span of two years, not that it has to be equally, but.
Seize it out of the budget, too.
I'm a favor. I agree with the mayor.
Okay.
It gives us a path to be able to get to a place where we really can make this a line item.
That's what we will do, thank you. Next item is social service. So what the idea here is, is we have a lot of social service nonprofit organizations in, in the city that, that need assistance for various things that will, that would help out because of, of things that happened in the pandemic, et cetera. And we would like to approach this by putting two hundred thousand dollars in the fund over the course of the, of the life of, of where the ARPA dollars are socially disposed, that he spends. What we would do would, we would set up a system that is very similar to our small business grant, and organizations could come to us and, and apply, and we would vet their requests, we'd vet their organization, and whether it will be, we'd give them a one thousand dollar grant, a five thousand dollar grant, a ten thousand dollar grant, or vice versa, would just depend on what their request is and what the limits of our funding would be.
So if Salvation Army needed a new stove, or the feet under the project needed.
A new wall.
A new freezer, that's what this is for. And they'd have to apply to every other grant, like, like to do with everybody.
And our, and our idea is exactly some of those things you've talked about, is something that is tangible, that is going to last them for a significant number of years, so they can serve their, their clientele.
So the, what do we foresee as the application period for this? Just because with two hundred thousand, a little one year, two year, three year?
Well, I think, I think there, we have a couple options, Mayor. Probably the easiest thing from a manager's standpoint would be to have, have this either be an annual or semi-annual process. I think in fairness to the organizations that may be applying too, they also have their own budgeting and funding cycles as well. But much like we do with the small business grant programs, that staff would come back to council here in the near future and say, here's a proposed set of criteria and guidelines, and we would probably be recommending things such as, you know, you know, in terms of scoring applications, is it aligned with some of our five-year CDBG plans and, and certain targets that we want to do there? Other priorities that council has seen, to make sure that those investments align with the things that the city, if you can determine this, and, and per girl, where you folks want to go. And then, you know, obviously, those individual grant agreements would come before council, but our, our thought would be, you know, or, you know, if it's your druthers, we could have it just on an ongoing basis, but probably on something like this, it probably just have a, a defined application window that says, you know, hey, by the first of August each year, and the first of March each year, or if you want to do it once a year, whatever, we know that that's the funding cycle, that's the decision cycle, and, and that folks can make plans.
They, they definitely need to be in line with the CDBG timing, because these organizations are also applying for that, so we need to, I would do it all at the same time, basically, so that we can know who all needs the money, and if they're not getting it, CDBG, maybe has. Right, but then also, for doing that, again, it comes back to this is annual, you're talking about an annual thing, ARPA is obviously one-time funding. So are we doing a hundred thousand a year for two years, or are we doing fifty thousand a year for four years? And what does two hundred thousand mean?
What's in front of you folks' financials was a discussion item to spark this conversation.
Right.
Two hundred grand this year.
I like the idea you have to sort of, but we've got a lot of great social services. Would this be kind of restricted to nonprofits? Because I'm thinking maybe the for-profits are applying some CDBG, yeah, I don't know.
Yes, it would be, this is where social service slash nonprofit.
And would, would, have you guys given any thought, this might be having to, kind of like a cap, because, you know, we could have.
Yes.
Out to a hundred thousand dollars less, you know, a cap of like ten or fifteen.
We, we would have a cap, and we haven't discussed what that'd be, but it would be similar to.
So I'm going to hit this kind of like a small business grant for which parameters.
And, and our, our thought on this was completely, it's two hundred thousand dollars out there, we start to get requests in, and when the two hundred thousand dollars is, is, is reached, it's the plan, it's a.
Yeah, I think, I think a one-time deal with all of them coming in, in conjunction with one of the CDBG parties would be good.
Obviously, that's always a conversation that can be revisited, once those funds are depleted, you know? If, if there's still such great need, that's always something that we can, that future councils can assist.
And when we finalize those, the, the, what the rules and everything, we will present to council, get your blessing on. Is that, is that?
I guess my only thought is, if we're doing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for for-profit businesses, then can we match that to two fifty for social services and nonprofits? Just to keep those, just to keep that balanced.
I'm not worried about that.
Okay. That makes Sam and Nate to do more math, but. That brings us to Holiday Hoopla. So as you are aware, Tuesday, council meeting, Holiday Hoopla gave a presentation of their desire to make this a permanent thing, and they need assistance in purchasing the ice cream permanently, which would be a cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand, it's like two forty-four or something, we rounded it to two forty-five, two hundred and forty-five thousand. Staff believes that this did bring a lot of people downtown. It created a, a, a lot of happiness, goodwill, and reason to come down and, and holiday spirit. We think it's a good thing. I, 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 we are, economic development is working through with Holiday Hoopla on their financials and their financial statements. We see this as kind of light up Middletown in its infancy, and, and can only get, get better. We do have some plans, because obviously, if the Swallow's Lot, where they're currently located, becomes part of the downtown RFQ, we are putting in the basin there on Main Street, and we have discussed that this would move there on top of the basin, basin that public works will be putting in. Public Works will be putting in, Scott might correct in that, thank you. And I, I think it, it, you know, ultimately will be a good holiday thing for downtown Middletown. An event draw or a destination, but once again, it's up to council if you wanna proceed with the project.
So regardless of that, ARPA or bed tax dollars?
Let me, can I correct myself on something? I did, I, I, I did not realize we took the primo funding out of the hotel bed tax. So there's ninety-two thousand dollars out of, left in the hotel bed tax. But we could take money out of the property development fund, which has two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in it to fund this.
Could this be a one-time thing? So for example, you know, I support it one hundred percent, but if they came back five years from now, which I don't think they would, but this is what we can see as our ring. But is that something we could explain to Hoopla and say, look, if we do this, like, everybody else can't come back every two years asking for more money? I think that's important.
That, that's, you know, we've had those discussions with, with Holiday Hoopla. I keep wanting to say hoopla. You know, it's like whistle. I don't say hissle. See that nub you're there, and it confuses me. You know, we've talked about that. It's like anything, it's, we wanna get it operationally sustainable. That's the plan. It's like light up Middletown. You know, it's operationally sustainable now. Hopefully, we will get Holiday Hoopla to that, to that point where it's sustainable and it's something the whole community can take advantage of. I, I really hear nothing but, but a lot of positives around the whole city about, about how great of an effort they did.
Two questions. What was, what was the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar fund? What was that other fund that they had?
The property development fund.
What could we be taking away from we use those funds?
Make them...
So both of those funds, so the property development fund, I'm going off memory, a caffrey here. Our property development fund goes towards the improvement of, of city properties and other, and other level expenses. The hotel motel tax, as, you know, as you use, council has traditionally been used either for economic development reasons and the B or some other things.
And so my second question, I ask you two things, and we have some clarifications. With that going on top of the basin, is there any money that can be used from long-term control plan funds to support this?
Quite possibly, yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, because we, we, we see the, we see the basin project as, you know, there's the utilitarian opponent of it, you know, the, the control basin and, and all the mechanicals, everything goes into that. But we said while we're at it there, can we provide a community amenity? And we're looking at a public gathering space, kind of, I'll say mini park feature that'll offer some of our recreational and event programming. And would, at some point in time, with Hoopla potentially, you know, not be able to maybe stay at the Swallow Lot forever. That's a really good second, that's a really good relocation opportunity for that, for this, you know, if the city were to buy it in the ring. You know, that it could be placed there in the winter months.
So one of the big things that wasn't discussed on Tuesday was there was a reference that a roller rink would be put there so it isn't around. But there was no expectation about who's paying for that? I don't know if they've got cost projections on what the...
Because obviously, they'd have to buy skates and the, or, you know...
I mean, what's in their financials, there's no way they're buying it, so let's be real, where they're coming to ask for the money.
Once again, they're gonna be looking at other sources of funding. And essentially, they know how much, you know, the city's in for. I don't see us going any further than that for the lack of a better way to explain it.
Because, I mean, the only way I want, if, if we're doing this, like, it's gotta be a year-round thing. And if we're putting it over at the basin, it's gotta be, we've gotta do something that's going to be around.
I think even if they, just thinking, so if they build in the parking and the bleachers and the, you know, concession stand and all the things that are required for Hoopla, right, and those are all located at the basin. They've got a slab of property there that the ice rink goes on in the wintertime, like they have a swallow. Because they've got that gravel log sort of, but I don't know if they could put that on a paved space and could that paved space be used for other things throughout the year? At that point, maybe, maybe it's not a skating, maybe it's not a skating rink, but it's something else in the summertime. I don't, you know, I feel like those...
That, that, the ring is convertible to a roller rink. The roller rink's not the same.
They just take the ice, like, the ice melts.
Yeah, you just melt the train, you melt the ice train longer, then it's, it's a skateable sort of train.
So their cost, so their biggest cost would be probably roller skates and staffing for the summer, which would be something that they would have to sustain themselves. But I think as it is, they rent the, they rent the scale, I don't think they own the ice skates. I think they rent those. That's part of their operating budget.
I, I could be incorrect, too, and Zach might have been in that meeting, like, last June, now with them. And one of their summer goals was to have the roller rink need to add movies in the park, kind of, the two movie streams for movies in the parks, I think, the whole thing. But I, I might be, am I incorrect on that?
No, I think they talked about, like, at that time, putting it on one of the buildings or something of that sort. So I think you would, I don't know.
And it's current location they can put it on.
Right, right, right. I don't know how to work a, you know, water basin and all of that area.
Maybe the city already owns a projection screen because they bought it for the movies in the parks and they can bring it out and use it at this location. I mean, I think it, it opens up a lot of possibilities.
Also, I could see a lot, I mean, that's just me, but I mean, I could see a lot of birthday parties happening there in the summer if you get it to a point where, like, well, I mean, I don't know if I have my birthday party.
If the city bought this, can we own it and lease it to them for a dollar? And thus, if they don't under, we now have the asset to resell because I definitely...
That was the exact point. That was my tip.
So I'm supportive of this if we don't do an athletic center. If we do an athletic center, I can't do a boat. I'm, I'm just, that's where I'm at.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Actually, no, I get, I get that.
Because I see them as... As a proven successful event that is able to draw people from outside of the Middletown community, but also certainly Middletown community. I mean, I think they've been able to prove that in the last two years. So at, at least for me, this is a proven attraction and a proven draw to Middletown.
I think one thing we have to realize, too, a lot of the people are enjoying it and loving it because for the most part, a lot of those people are not paying anything for it, which is okay. But I think a lot of these are one hundred percent subsidized by people, but I don't know because I don't have any of those ticket numbers from this year. But if you look at it from last year, and so we all love things that are free, which is great. But at some point, we also have to realize, like, there's money going into it every year from, from corporations, from private donations that isn't going elsewhere. It's going there, which is okay. But remember, when people say, I love the event, it's amazing, all the kids are smiling, yes, it's being subsidized, though. So just keep that in mind, right? It's not, it's not like everybody's, which I'm good with, totally good with. I just wanna make sure we recognize that has, it's taking regular donations, which...
It also has the support of community organizations that have already proven that, that they're willing to invest.
Well, I wonder if everybody says, but it's kind of cool that, and, you know, I, I, I see what you guys are saying, but it's kind of cool that Middletown has become a special destination for Franklin, Franklin and Monroe. Everybody comes here. A lot of Middletown and the Hoopla. It benefits our restaurants downtown and our dairy. And I, I understand what you're both saying about the, the cost and the products and all, and I get that. I just think that Hoopla's a kind of a necessity because it is proven at this point.
Utilities. I'm in circles about utilities. I'm super confused about the utilities.
Yeah.
For like, I saw that the budget for twenty twenty-one had nineteen hundred dollars in utilities that the city paid for. And then it said that the twenty twenty-two budget they came in, thirty thousand dollars. And I was, like, out of control confused.
I have not got a full answer on that.
Okay.
Scott, can you...
And who is paying for the utilities in the future?
Scott, come on up, Scott.
I'm up till the adult age here.
So the city's paying for the electric at thirty-nine Moore Frog, which is the Hoopla site. Last year, they used a, because Duke didn't get the electric hooked up fast enough, they used a generator to run most of the season. So the electric cost was low last year to the city because they weren't using the city electric. So this year, to date, as I looked at the bills this week, it was, I think, as of December twenty-second, it was sixty-two hundred dollars this season. And then based on my projections, it would total ten thousand for the whole season.
Where's the thirty thousand dollars?
I think they added some, a, a quick discussion late last night with Abbott is, there might be some stuff added in there that weren't necessarily utility they're looking into.
Okay, and then who is paying that this year? Is that the city?
Yeah, and that, that, the city pays the electric bill.
Well, that, not the thirty, the thirty thousand comes from their operating...
Yeah, I don't know about thirty thousand. We made the electric bill to Duke.
Which was, you said six something? So the thirty thousand dollar line item there is not in the end, they're expenses, right?
I'm not sure. We, we have to find out what it actually is.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's electric utilities.
Yeah, I don't think it's a...
I think it's an accounting question.
It's an, yeah.
Then that's where it is.
And that's...
So they also had a different rink this past year than they did the first year. So the rink they had this year was larger and required a X amount.
They operated a few more days, had a larger, what do they call it, a chiller? That caused you more to operate also.
Plugged into our electric. So, okay, so on there, the thirty thousand, though, shouldn't be on their expenditures. It should be on ours.
Well, again, our expenditures probably be about ten grand for the electric issue.
Okay, and is that what we would expect when we, like, that, is that, do we have to budget for that as a city moving forward? Or if we pay for the ice rink, is, are they taking on the electric bill?
I think I can add clarification here. He's got a text from our staff. The utilities there, that, that thirty thousand line item, I think, no, take it back, never mind. I'll shut up.
Now, they, they put money into updating the electric at the Slidewalk.
Scott, how much, how much do we spend on electric for Light Up Middletown? Because the city pays that electric bill, too, right? Yeah, so I mean, if we're, if we're comparing events, I think it's important to also note that these, we pay for the electric for the free events.
Yeah, Middletown puts a lot back into the city, too, though.
Sure.
Which hopefully, one day, I, I think we're gonna get to where Holiday Hoopla, that's that, too.
And the economic...
I get it. I understand it. There's, there's, we're, I, I foot economic development. Lisha and Jake Bill are working close with Abbott to, to hopefully work to where this, this program here sustains itself just like Light Up Middletown does. And I think it's a wonderful thing for downtown Middletown.
My, my thought is, I'd like, I'd like, I would like to keep it going. I'd be interested in paying out of the other funds, some combination of the other funds, so that we can keep this buffer from these other things. But that would be intended upon, like, don't, please don't come back, you know, one, we want to support you this one time, and then you need to be self-sufficient.
That's the point.
It'll have to move it. It's gonna have to move.
Well, it'll have to be stored.
It'll be stored, and that's part of their operational cost, just storage and all that.
I think they have a lot of, like, Martin excavating, like, kind of helps, Cohen helps with all that, so they get a lot of that.
I also wanted to see if, while we're talking about relocating the rink, we had previously discussed relocating the Grand Ballgame bond. You know, if we, if we bring on this asset and it needs the same storage that we also, I mean, is there a way for us, is there a way for us to, when we talk about upgrading the Grand Ballgame?
Well, we're not, that's not gonna occur any longer because it changes to the public works situation with the line. It's not gonna happen.
While I process the facility, at this point, it's, it's too expensive. It's not economically feasible.
Is there movement in Grand Ballgame bond for us?
No, no, they, they need, they need more movement.
They need more things. Okay.
So where's it gonna get stored and put in the bill?
Um, Lisha, do you? Oh, John's here. I can't see that for John.
Can I just touch on that thirty thousand? The thirty thousand on that line item in our budget financial sheet for this year? So when Nancy did the financials, it was actually from the end of twenty twenty-two to this year. So it was the end of last season. That thirty thousand actually came out of the eighty-six thousand that council agreed to reimburse us. So that thirty thousand actually was money approved by council to reimburse Hoopla for the infrastructure of the electricity upgrades to the Swallow Lot. So Nancy still felt that that item needed to be on our financials this year. Because it was the end of last year's season, which was twenty twenty-two.
So then it should have been a positive line item, not a negative. Because that's, that's a reimbursement, too, which, well, instead of taking, I mean, that's a sixty thousand dollar swing.
So I think the financial sheet that Nancy sent us, that we sent to you guys, started at the eighty-six thousand dollars that we got from council last year. Unless I'm looking at the wrong...
Yeah, I mean, I sent an email, asked some questions, and I know it was last, it was very quick, but this is all in there. So yes, it, yes, the terms are just hard to follow.
I'm sorry.
So that's all. I, I could, I was trying to get clarification, and I...
Oh, storage, I'm sorry. So storage. So, um, we've partnered with, um, uh, Cohen over the last two years. And Cohen has stored all of our lights for us. And so we're working on an agreement for storage of the rink equipment as well.
Okay, so that would be covered privately?
Yeah. And, and can I just touch on the rink? It will be year-round. So when we talked with, um, Public Works or Economic Development regarding the basin lot being the, um, permanent area. So once that slab is created, it becomes a roller rink during the, uh, summer. And then we just melt ice on that same exact slab to convert it into a, um, ice rink in the winter. So our intention is always that this is an amenity for the community to enjoy year-round.
When you say slab, is that what we're buying right now? Is this slab? What are we buying then?
So we're, we're buying the equipment, the ice rink, like, the, the bumpers, the ice skates, the, the coils that, because this is real ice. So there's coils that run through, um, to create, that freezes the ice, that freezes the water to create the ice. So all of that equipment that you actually see there at the rink right now, it's all of that equipment.
Okay, so the slab sounds expensive, who's paying for a slab?
So it would be the infrastructure that would be created on this park, this lot where the basin is.
So the city...
The basin, the entire top of the basin is gonna be a concrete site.
Right.
Now, we'll have...
Right.
They can create a parking and a place for this.
Yes.
Yeah, or other, or other amenities.
Okay.
And we have, like, a rough concept plan now, but we have to refine.
I mean, we're talking, there, there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars of extra investment to make all this work. We're, we're...
But it seems to me like a lot of that extra investment is already baked into the basin project.
We were gonna do something, some sort of amenity on top of the basin, regardless of whether it's a...
Is it basketball, is it a basketball court?
Yeah, could have, could have, could have, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So that's in the city's budget?
Well, that, yeah, that's part of the property. Similar like Sunset where you have some amenities associated with it.
It's definitely a project that allows for the success. I'm just making sure, like, this is expected to be, now we got shipboard coverage, so make sure this is, what is the...
It would be part of the budget for the basin.
I think if the idea that the infrastructure for that site location is already baked into this project and this is the ask for the rink and that they will maintain their maintenance and, and additional costs and marketing and all these things just like the Grand Ballgame does, that, you know, for me, it's the, it's the regional draw. It's the, it's the people it brings in. It's, yeah.
So I guess the question is, it seems like, I don't know, like, correct me if I'm wrong, and the majority of you are in favor of this. It's a matter of do we take it out of ARPA or do we look into the other funds?
I tend to agree with Tao that we should look into these other funds and, and keep these ARPA funds available for other ARPA related uses.
Well, here's the thing about ARPA. If we know we're gonna spend the money on this thing one way or the other, just use the ARPA dollars because it has an expiration date as the other part, like, we could just do that.
And one, and it's a one-time cost.
But, but they're more flexible. They're more flexible than bed tax, which has a restrictive...
Specific, so we need to balance that, I guess, for one or the other. Yeah, if that's, I think, yeah.
That makes sense.
I mean, definitely...
It leaves us more flexibility if we use these other funds to do...
Because the ARPA is more flexible.
Right, that's my idea.
But it does have a timer to check. So there's positive in that, so.
Okay, so we're doing the other ones.
Or a combination? I don't know what makes sense. I don't, I don't, these property development funds, I mean, we have way more than two hundred and fifty-five dollars than maybe for two hundred and thirty-five thousand in these property developments.
Well, our goal...
We also have the capital improvement fund that we can use for some of those projects as well.
Our goal is to try to, like, save some money remaining beginning of this meeting, so why not? Our goal is to try to, like, save some money with Manny at the beginning of this meeting, so why not choose the same funds?
Well, I mean, that's what it's like a shell game that way.
Yeah, that's what all these.
I'm not into that. I mean, I don't want to hide it, it's, it's.
Well, I don't think it's hiding, I mean, that's a good use of it, just to, we're, we're out of, we're leaving more funds left there than us.
They're the one. All over, not just.
So the other funds? Or our part? The other funds?
Other funds.
Other funds.
Other funds, other funds, other funds.
You addition on this?
Outside.
Yes, I do have one, it's very minor, and it might just be me, but I have, I already talked to the Light Up Milltown board members yesterday, two of them. Um, I have a big request. I know that you had talked to one of them as well, but I'd like to request twenty thousand dollars. Um, each light display is anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand, but some electrical issues, and they didn't mention that, Scott, I don't know what they said about some electrical issues. They're not coming with a hat in hand, but potentially, if we could do something, that'd be great. They do have to respond to shit. That's why we're not centralizing, but as we all know, Light Up Milltown benefits everybody, nobody makes no money or no D dollars for the tree. Anybody can look through the displays app up there, it tracks everybody in Butler Warren, other counties. So it's something that they'd like to request. If we, if councilors want to do it, I understand.
Is there not?
I'll follow through out there.
Is there enough funding?
They would, they would supply.
Left in the, in the two sources we talked about, from Holiday Hoopla, or about additional twenty thousand dollar act?
So, I, I apologize, I kind of missed. So we're good to go on holiday?
Oh, I thought you meant.
And he was, he's trying to ask, with Holiday Hoopla, are you going to spend ARPA funds? He wants a hard, he wants a hard answer. ARPA funds, or other sources?
Other sources is what?
Tao and, and Zach said other sources, Monica said other sources, the mayor said, it doesn't really matter, is what I think.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, so it sounds to me like it's other sources. I will say this, Mayor, but we, we, uh, economic development is working very closely with, with Hoopla to make sure we get some of the financial questions answered and have a plan going forward, so that they are sustainable, financially sustainable, pretty much like Light Up Milltown. So with that, before we move on, I, I want to go back, so we get the running numbers correct. Milltown Event Center, we're on board for the five hundred thousand. Economic Development, we're on board for the one point two five million. Neighborhood revitalization, we're on for the eight hundred thousand. Downtown RFQs, we're on for the three million. Sorgh Opera, we're on for the one sixty-five thousand. Aquatic Centers on hold, we're pulling that to the side. The Butler Tech Hanger, five hundred thousand, we're pulling that to the side. Parks and Rec, we're at two hundred thousand. Social Services, we're at two fifty. We're taking the two forty-five out of there, so.
Was there any consensus about the Sorgh Opera House and whether or not there was support to?
I thought, yeah, I thought we said if there's, we see there's more money later and we see what their additional needs are, other than what we know.
I wasn't sure if that was the end of this discussion, if we were ready to commit that three seventy-five, or?
I thought we committed to one sixty-five.
I would be open to have that discussion more, whilst we find out about the tech hangar and more financials. Yeah, that was a, that's how we're going.
I mean, so we're already taking the two forty-five out of here for Holiday Hoopla. Is that not an amount that we could reallocate to the Sorgh to get them to the number that they need to get the roof fixed and to get those white boxes? I, I, just to re, just to revisit that, because that's the one, one, the one line item up there for me that I'm still hanging, hanging on.
I, I agree, I agree for that, as for regional draw, you can, for all or.
We're talking about, you know, Holiday Hoopla and all the things that there is, the great people in Milltown, the, the economic driver that they are, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't.
So you want to reallocate the two forty-five totally, that totally to Sorgh?
What is that?
So you're already giving a hundred and fifty thousand away?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that, that, that ask was four forty minus the seventy.
They were at three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five was the total that they were. Right, I'm not just saying, uh, hop, you know, pop that Hoopla number up there and see what can we do, what can we do to get, I, it sounds like we've reallocated enough things that we should be able to get them into that three seventy-five. Did I just steal your thunder?
You just, you just saw your hammer.
Put that two forty-five up there in the Butler Tech Hanger.
All right, so the white box, the white box ask is what, two twenty-five, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the roof ask is, so we're two seventy-five. They're at, they, they've raised seventy-five by themselves right now? Is that correct?
All right, that's correct.
So what if we split it down the middle and we give another hundred? And then that covers half.
At the very least, I want to make sure they get a new roof.
Well, that, yeah, that would, so that would be the roof plus fifty thousand.
Plus an extra fifty to work on those white boxes.
I mean, my problem with that is, I mean, I don't, uh, I think that's doable, simply to the fact of what they bring to Milltown. People come from all over. I think I told you, I just did a show, just a show for our competition. People from Trenton and Monroe have never been in there, were crazy about it, had never seen this, so, the update, or I should say.
Okay, what was it? It was one hundred plus what? What was the second part of that? So essentially, their, their, their gap between white box and roof is going to be at two hundred thousand right now, between what they've raised already. And what, what were we talking about?
I won't be previously.
Um, proposed was a hundred.
Proposed was a hundred.
Okay.
Essentially, their, their gap, they need to bridge, is two hundred. I'm proposing a hundred to get them half towards there.
We'll get that back into the terms of small business.
The first financial roof, is that being considered under that three million, or where's the first financial roof?
The first financial, nothing specifically on the roof.
First National or first financial? I don't know.
First financial, you are correct.
Financial is first financial.
First financial, first financial.
I apologize.
That, you know, I, that, uh, I had a discussion with, again, with, with, uh, our building, chief building official. That's, we're, we're talking at least six hundred thousand.
That doubled in one month.
Well, so, no, not one month. He visited that about eight months ago, and with every, all the other, the economy and inflation.
And we gotta do it, that's what we gotta do it.
But, but he is going to reach out and give us some estimates.
Okay, that seems like a really high number. Especially considering the number that we just got from the Sorgh to fix their roof.
Well, theirs is almost all done, it's almost worth it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was worried, it would be extra hundred.
It, it's more complex than.
But my question with that is, where are we pulling that money from? Because I don't want to pull it from the three hundred, the, the three million that's up there, where we start whittling that down the mountain, but we're.
That was a question I was going to be coming to you with in one of the next couple of council meetings.
Okay, because I feel like it, it is a big number that's going to bend everything. We don't, we don't do it. It's going to be a while before this money ends up in someone else's hands, and it's only making it worse.
Correct, so a couple of these things, I think, are going to work themselves out over probably the next month or two. And then we still do have a little bit of capital investment project money, whatever, and we'll have money left over here. We can maybe at that point strategically figure out how to replace it. You don't have a building, you don't have a roof, you don't have a building. I see it every day at my job.
Yeah, we have to. So if we take six hundred thousand, just put it somewhere in the budget, so that we've got it somewhere, that, that would make it feel better. I, I don't care what we do, so I just want to make sure we don't.
That was a couple of the Sorgh right now, but.
I know, I just keep playing it, now we're out of the more funds that we didn't talk about.
I think it's a no-brainer, right? We, we'll get it back. Our small businesses will thrive, if the Sorgh continues to thrive.
So we need an agreement about two hundred and sixty-five for the Sorgh Opera House, is where the rest of council's at?
I feel good with that.
So how much will we add?
Two sixty-five. Two sixty-five for the Sorgh.
Two sixty-five for the Sorgh. Do I hear two seventy-five? Hey, guys, I'm just trying to help you. Oh, it's an auctioneer there.
And then, Rod, that you're asking for light ups with money.
Oh, wait, hold on a second. But, but, I want to try to finish this first, and then we'll move on. So I apologize about trying. I just want to make sure, Sam, that you guys take the numbers right, so we don't make any mistakes.
What do you guys have? What does that bring you to for a total removal that's not, that would not be encumbered at this?
Uh, three plus a one ninety-five, so it's three point one nine five on top of the forty-one, so.
I have three six four six ninety-seven.
That's probably within, yeah.
And that, and that number would not, that would be taken in the aquatic center and the Butler Tech Hanger out of the total. Correct, if we're, and the Holiday.
So wait, what's the number? If the aquatic center didn't.
Three, three point, if those two are set aside, and the Holiday Hoopla is out of the budget allocation here.
How much extra do we spend? A hundred on Sorgh, fifty on social services.
And a hundred on Parks and Recs.
Okay.
Two hundred.
Two, what was that?
A hundred additional.
Hundred?
Oh, extra, yeah.
Okay. We have two fifty for two forty-five.
So two four four six ninety-seven. Or so, three four four six.
Sorry. We have two fifty, correct?
We can even shoot that one away, but, that's what you give your black?
No, that's what, so Matty, I have everything. Yeah, okay, so let's, let's just theoretically, let's leave what's up there, plus what we had. So it's two fifty, and we took away two forty-five with Holiday Hoopla. Am I wrong?
Yeah, but we gave a hundred to Parks and Rec, a hundred to the Sorgh, and then we gave fifty to Social Services. So we basically washed the Holiday Hoopla and the others.
Well, that's.
Take the two and a half and the half.
We're going to put the spreadsheet up there and change the.
That was initial three million approximately into that four eight one eight seven.
Well, no, that, well, that's what I.
Fifty-three million, four eight five, it's not.
Well, I thought you were fairing how we would need it, isn't that?
No, no.
That leaves the three plus.
We're almost exactly.
We're five thousand dollars off, okay.
Your next. That's still too many holding money for the aquatic center.
That leaves us three point four.
Yeah.
Is that whatever that, right? Thank you.
Okay, now, are we good with that? Okay, moving on, I'd like to move to entertain, uh, proposals from individuals, council members. I think, uh, Councilman Mewerswell started it with, uh, Light Up Milltown, and I didn't quite catch the number.
Twenty thousand.
What's that?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
They're not asking for anything after, I'm going, to me, it's a period of market, if anybody can go to, one display costing you from ten to fifteen thousand, which is ridiculous. That's what they call it, through electrical issues, it's an individual's fault.
That's, that's, that, to me, is what, what I heard. I, I actually heard from twenty-five thousand to help them get some basic electrical needs they need to up, I shouldn't say basic, electrical needs they need to upgrade and, uh, help them, uh, with their future.
It's just a great thing for us, it is, I don't care if we do wrong, fight, not only.
I support that.
Everybody loves it.
Twenty-five thousand, okay, twenty-five thousand.
I, I don't think we, the city's given them money decades, have we?
I don't think.
They give us money. Yeah, you told us.
We still give them a whole lot of labor.
Yeah, you told us to have. Yeah, but they give us at least ten thousand dollars a year to pay people that hard, too.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Along with other organizations, like, uh, Taco Grill today, or something.
You think that twenty-five thousand will help?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other proposals for the ARPA dollars?
I mean, I have a whole inbox full of them, but I don't know where. I mean, like I said before, I think for me, I would like to see us invest more in the Parks Master Plan and putting more money towards that. I know that, in, you know, in the bottom part of your discussion, we're going to talk about the, um, capital improvement fund, but we've got only two million dollars earmarked for parks. And the, and I, I know we've got three, you know, three and a half million dollars sitting here that we're looking at, and we've got aquatic center, uh, hangar that are still on hold, but, I, you know. I'm just always going to make the case for spending more money on the parks.
If we don't, if we don't do the aquatic center, that money has to get, has to move into a similar light item thing, which to me is so, it has, and that's, that's my whole point about that money. I think we've got to spend it on that.
But I think if we've got it set aside right now, and it's not encumbered or earmarked for anything at the moment, that that's a discussion we have to.
Yeah, let's see what we can do with the capital funds, see how far we get, and then we can get into that money to make the parks happen, we can do it.
Yeah, and, you know, it's that, it's that visualization, how, how we see ourselves, how others see us, is a direct reflection. Our parks are, are, yeah, yeah, are a great example of how we see ourselves.
Okay, good, let's, uh, move on to the, the next area is, oh, I got it, sorry, Nathan. It is the general reserve fund. Just to remind everybody, in twenty twenty-one, council voted to, uh, set order, an ordinance forth that, uh, any general reserve fund over twenty percent be allocated to, um, capital improvement programs. So, uh, with that said, we're at nearly fifty percent of the general fund reserve. Sam, in my humblest, what that translates to is about eleven million dollars. And with that, Nathan, we can just move on, Nathan.
Thank you. Uh, so where we're at right now, council, um, is we've identified three large capital improvement initiatives um, that have, have just been deferred, two of them are just deferred maintenance or deferred capital replacement. And then the, the third item here is, is related to our fire station construction and, uh, entering a very turbulent, escalating cost environment. One of the things that we, we brought to council attention, um, in the recent past, is that, uh, the city's HVAC, HVAC system at City Hall is original, almost entirely, or for the most part. So it dates back to, uh, maybe the Gerald Ford administration. And we are now, uh, incurring maintenance costs and replacement costs because the, the system is failing. Um, we went a few days, uh, this month without heating the building or heating a substantial part of the building, uh, just due to the age of the system, freeze fall, and other issues. We have a quote, we've been working with our, our main vendor, uh, that's been maintaining our system, and a comprehensive replacement of the HVAC system, which also, if you notice over the last year or so, council chambers has become incredibly humid. That's an issue with our ability to dehumidify that area of the building, um, get, get proper circulation of air throughout the building. Um, it, it's, it's adding to our electric, uh, and utility costs, um, just because we are unable to control uh, heat and cooling in certain zones of the building. So as you migrate through City Hall, it might, at this time of year, maybe you went through certain hallways and it's frigid, and then you walk into another part or around a corner, and it's, it's, it's rather warm, just because of, of our ability to mix the air, um, throughout the, throughout the building. We're looking at about a two point nine million dollar price tag. Over the project from start to finish will probably take a little more than three years to complete. Just based on the size of our facility, the supply chain and ordering of components, and, and the like. Now, we can look at this a couple ways, we can look at it as well, hey, if staff can we just pay a third, a third, a third and be done? And kind of roll each year. The, 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 that price in total is to get everything under contract, everything done now instead of waiting and not being able to, you know, have delays in ordering or, or the like, but also at least a lock in a price. But we, we are, we are in a, we're in a situation where, you know, we're at risk of not being able to heat or cool the facility any given day, that's where we're at right now. And it's, it's just one of those things, you know, like, you know, there probably aren't too many houses left in, you know, Middletown that have a furnace that goes back to nineteen seventy-five, you know, it is what it is. So that, that's one proposal for the capital dollars, it's nothing exciting, it's just, you know, life. As, as Ms. Nene, Ms. Nene pointed out, staff is proposing two million dollars to go towards park capital improvements. Those reflect, so if you remember the Parks Master Plan, those reflect, we, we had a, we had a three-tiered system or, or categorization of improvements that were deemed, you know, on, 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 as options. One were immediate needs, these are things that are things such as, you know, safety hazards are parks, very bare minimum stuff, okay? Then we had a second tier of your basic needs, which were not incredibly time-sensitive or critical in terms of liability or safety issue or other types of things, but were things that are just, these are kind of the basics you do at your park, you know, I mean, you know, you know, you, you have a, you have a picnic shelter that needs repaired and everyone, you need a picnic shelter at a park, for instance. And then the third tier were more longer-term aspirational types of improvements. That two million dollar figure will get you all of the immediate needs that were identified in the Park Master Plan across our entire park system addressed. Plus an extra about half a million dollars to start eating into the listing of basic improvements on the list. And Scott and his team would be able to kind of, as we go through these contracts and bidding processes, of kind of identifying what those are. As, as kind of a, and Scott, do you remember the breakdown on the basic needs, what was that, about three point six? I'm off memory. Four point six?
Oh, I don't know.
It's called four million right now. The thing to also keep in mind, council, is that why are we talking about this, this is, these are surplus revenues, I, I say surplus for loosely, these are revenues above our expenditures that have accumulated, for the most part, probably over the last two fiscal cycles, two and a half fiscal cycles. So if we stay on the, on the current expenditure track out of our general fund along with the same revenue track that we are witnessing, that we would expect that we can have this discussion maybe to the tune of about three million dollars a year and couple that up with, in terms of timing, with our annual budget process to see where we're going. Now, that's if we stay at a twenty percent level, which is like the ten and a half weeks of operations. But this would get us through everything on, everything on the immediate needs and would get us about a quarter of our way through our basic needs on that list of the master plan. With at least staff's recommendation that some of these surplus dollars, you know, Lord willing every year, are continually programmed in to implement the Park Master Plan. Which is a point of view in the plan to begin with. And then the third, the third, the third buffet offering today, because it's getting close to lunchtime, is additional dollars to fill some funding gap for the construction of our four new fire stations. The, the levy that was passed by the voters and supported is, if we would have bid out everything probably about a year, year and a half ago, would have probably covered all of our construction costs, the hard costs. As we had a discussion at the night on the construction manager, Bruce, arranged it, we're looking at about eighteen seven right now. We're finding that that number could go up slightly, could go down slightly. But that's our best estimate based on our architect firm. But what was not included along the way are the soft costs and, and the, and also the associated with the times we're in, the, the inflation in, in construction material costs. And so we're of a mind from a staff standpoint that the additional five million, hopefully not all of it has to be spent, but will give us the ability to, to bridge that gap.
What was the total levy now?
Sixteen point eight.
So my question is, I'm looking at the sheet from Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Because I, I really have the fire station more like two or three in my head, just would have been like four for the parks and kind of make something flow a little bit easier. Looks like the contingency for Pepper is three million. I assume that's the difference, so we got, there's a decent chance we're gonna come at two million and change, and they got a three million dollar buffer to get us to five. I'm not saying we pull.
No, 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 no.
Try to.
You're, you're, you're on to something because we will have more situational awareness by third quarter of this year.
Yeah, so that's where I was headed next, like, we might know.
It's a lot of bid prices on two.
Or a couple million dollars heavy or lighter.
Yeah, right.
We're, we're being extremely conservative because that eats up the entire contingency of the two point nine.
We're being extremely conservative and then also counting for the soft costs.
So there's a chance as well that we could be coming down from there and doing more parks and.
Yes.
That'll lead to my second point, and I think everybody knows how I feel about this, especially Ben, because that's the park that we have here, and we didn't even know it. I'd love for Park Board and the community and council and everybody to weigh in on, instead of just picking out of the catalog, you know, to pick the new swing set or the gymnasium or whatever it might be, like, can we consider designing something really unique, like you see a blue act or like you see, you know, a church out on the park, or something that would really be a draw as opposed to just the next, the next swing set?
Right.
I would love for us to consider that.
Yes.
Because my family and our neighbors are leaving the community every summer day to go to these unique parks as opposed to the swing set at some point.
And if you add the numbers up there, you'll see, we'd love the two million dollar cushion up there.
And I think to that, to that point, it would be a cool opportunity for us, when we talk about this neighborhood revitalization, to bring these neighborhood groups together and give them a purpose to convene in their neighborhood parks and be a part of that decision-making process. You know, so if that's the draw, hey, we've got, we've got some money and we want to invest it in a park, let's all get together. I mean, I think that that would be, that would just be great.
The number I wanted to see for parks with four million, I understand that it looks like we may actually be able to do that, we're just kind of putting two million of it in the fire temporarily to make sure we're not over committing ourselves. There's also the ARPA that's sitting there, that if we get to the end of things, has it allocated itself to go there instead? Seeing that we're gonna be finding out with a quarter of this year, if we end up needing all of that five million, if we, if we make sure we tell ourselves like, hey, these are our dollars, we need to sit here, like, hey, self, like, put it in my savings, right, like, don't let, maybe, put it in a fund I can't get to, make myself save it till third quarter. And the third quarter, if we have more clarity on the fire station costs and find out they are the full five billion, maybe we say, okay, we gotta dip into the ARPA now for our parks, we can do it from that point.
Yes, true of that.
Yeah, I think whichever way it swings, I would like to see parks at, at four.
What if four get us? We're not one hundred percent sure, right? We still are kind of throwing numbers out there, but no one's gonna have any doubt.
I mean, it gets our immediate needs, and then it gives us the opportunity to decide what those basic needs look like.
I would just remind everybody that Butler Tech is gonna be trying to drop a bid in a quarter, a quarter, three quarters? And so we might not want to set all of that three point four in the piggy bank until fall. They're gonna probably need to know.
Um, I don't, I agree with you.
So a lot of staff go back and have those conversations.
Speaking of the piggy bank, with that money, eighteen whatever sitting in, whatever, sitting in, I correct now, it's, it's gaining a little bit of interest, correct?
I'd like to see us keep three million in the ARPA slush until third quarter. If we think it's two of it for parks and one of it for stuff's gonna increase in cost, some of this stuff.
If we can at least keep two in there, I think that we're leaving ourselves some cushion. You know, not three and a half, but maybe two, if we say, you know, we're definitely gonna leave two million dollars in there until the third quarter so that we can decide what's gonna happen here, that still leaves us with a million and a half dollars in the ARPA fund to make those decisions about Butler Tech, we need to.
I'm the one who started putting investments when I was twenty years old, so I'm like, more money than make is better, but like, let's wait and make sure.
But I think if you take that and split the difference and say, okay, if two is what we're saying we need for this and, and that gives us still some decision-making money, then.
I, I, the first one's a no-brainer, that has to happen, because what you, this, the four, I understand what, what you like to say about the fire station, but it would be awesome to have the park have at least a minimum of three, if that can come down to four, the other one, but, you know, you guys have the effort on that, so it's.
Why do you have to wait until third quarter to know that answer? I would think bidding would be quicker than that.
We'll, we'll, we'll know all the sub packages all of the time, but I mean, we're gonna know all the sub packages on the first two fire stations, we're gonna know how on the money or not we are on our estimates.
Springfield, Bull Ring Township, and Carlisle, I'll have their bids out right now with that.
Yeah.
Some of those bids come back, we're gonna have a better idea.
Yeah.
So we might get up a fourth or third.
We may.
We may.
I want to under promise and never deliver.
Yeah, but we gotta work through the C more part and have them go over the plan to make sure that we're, we're the best.
Are they building similar size, I mean, Springfield, Carlisle, building similar models?
Yes.
But if it was a city building and we looked into solar on the roof to help cut down water costs, then or even benefit the section?
Are you, are you talking about on the fire stations?
No, no.
No, I'm not saying that's on a turbo E either, but.
I know, because we are, we are, we are considering that into the fire stations, at least to conduit to, to install it.
Okay, but I just think it's capital money that has to be.
Yeah, we'd never looked at it in the city building that I'd do it on, might have there, but it's.
That's something, there's a law change in Inflation Reduction Act that allows some governments now to take advantage of some federal funds to do projects just like that.
We probably had like, I'm sorry, like, five, I can forget what it was, like, five or six years ago, it wasn't that effective then, but it.
But it changed substantially now to where like the federal government will give you thirty percent, like, they'll actually give you real dollars, like, if it's a ten million dollar project, they will give you three million dollars towards it. That coupled with some pace financing options or, we can look at that, actually, that's a viable, we can look at.
We'll venture back into that.
Maybe get us some money or annual budget freed up and all that stuff.
And if using, if using that technology at the fire stations can help cut, reduce their overhead costs, which are gonna go up substantially with the increased size of their fire stations, I mean, whatever we're allocating for utilities and things like that now are gonna be much increased with these new stations as well.
There will be, well, you know, the, the nice parts will be more efficient.
They should, but it'll be interesting to see how utilities change from the old stations to the new ones.
And the, the other element in this one, too, is our general fund reserve, the percentage that we're committed to keeping in there or not. I know we haven't set for twenty, obviously, we're not whittling it down to that, but is that something that council and the other places are just long-term, do we want it to be greater than twenty percent? I know, Paul, you had some thoughts on that?
We, we're a little bit nervous of taking it down to twenty percent. We, we thought maybe twenty-five percent is a little bit better, and I said two million, I mean, there's a cushion if they're one point one million.
I mean, maybe we try and spend that money now while we can, maybe spend that money now while we can because we've deferred maintenance on so many projects for so long, and then, you know, maybe in two or three years if we're still feeling uncomfortable about the twenty, that it can be raised, but, I mean, I think the, the whole reason to bring it down that slow was that we have so many things, so many projects that needed that funding.
For years ago, it's fifteen.
He owns and operates all ten.
So, um, if I just, it's advisable to consider it, I'm, I'm happy to think through that process and why, um, but there are downsides of it.
Okay, so maybe it's a discussion for, for the.
What's the reasoning for the remaining one point one million?
Like you, Arthur, we were leaving a cushion, if we, you guys felt we wanted to put enough additional money into the parks?
Because I feel like we've got a major cushion in the fire station park already, and like, we're almost over cushioning.
That's also money we could use towards downtown revitalization, too.
That could go to infrastructure, that could.
I also, I also feel that the City Hall improvements could also benefit from an increase if we've got that, you know, if we've got an extra million dollars that we're not even allocating or, or have spent on fire stations that might come back. Does, this doesn't take care of the paper situation on both sides of the city building.
The papers right around the building are already budgeted.
Right, those are budgeted for, but the, uh, the papers on the back side, this does not take into account.
Not, not considered after the flaws in that.
This does not take into consideration the flaws on.
Or all the windows being replaced.
Yeah, the windows.
So, I mean, so we've got a lot of like front door issues at the city building that we need to also consider. I mean, obviously, I, I would love for all of the money to go to parks, but I also think that we have to put our best foot forward at the city building and within the city building. Have always felt like that plaza was underutilized ever since Midvest left that plaza. I mean, you've got, you've got a huge amount of resources there with electrical lookups and space and proximity in downtown. I mean, those papers are a pathway right into our downtown, and I, you know.
I'm not so sure.
It's hard waiting to see it so underutilized.
I think that plaza might very well need to go into the study done.
Yeah, I think what they used to talk about, and we were like, yeah, there's a better, higher use for the flow to make that work, and so maybe before we spend money on papers, we see what's going on. I think that this is a good, like, start for this, these funds, and I would like for our message, I think, from council to Park Board and city staff, that we, let's push forward and know we're spending four million on parks, like, make the plans. Obviously, we have a priority where the money starts to get expended, but if we're thinking now there's a four million dollar fund for parks, we need to start planning that out, right, and that because by the time we try it out that we do have more money, then the plan can be a place to.
Yeah, and the very least, we can take this, too, and spend it on immediate needs, there's no reason to hesitate there.
Be nice to know. Forget, if, if future council is gonna have this in sixteen months, because they will have one or two at the end of next year, then like you're saying, except that we would already have the plans and it's like turn keys.
Just, yeah. Write a check.
I, I, not to, I don't want Scott to take this the wrong way, but an initial two million dollars, that's, that's a, that, that's a very robust year on top of all our other capital projects for his staff to manage and get done, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna be done by the end of the year.
How long would it take, how long would it reasonably take us to complete the immediate needs list?
I would say realistically by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Is there any way to get that done quicker?
Well, we're, we're stretched very thin.
Yeah, okay.
Not all that public works.
I mean, I'm saying, I mean, if we've got, if we've got the funds, is there a way to, I mean,
you know, we wear the.
That some of it's not done in-house, that some of it is, I mean.
That is true, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's something we're jumping right on, and we're gonna have a group that addresses it and gets it, and gets it completed as soon as possible, especially the, the major stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about that, I would like to, I would like to see us have a plan to get the immediate needs completed as soon as possible.
So are we not, or is this not like subbing out most of this work?
No, you would be contracting on that, but that takes time and work to do that. There's two of the requirements that, we have to have bid packages, I mean, there's, there's a lot of impact goes in. I hate to say it, but there's a lot of work that goes into spending all this money.
Come on, stop.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, but we will, we will do it ex- expeditiously as possible. Is there anything else on capital improvement that we need to discuss? Is there anything else on capital improvement that we need to discuss? Well, with that, it's all staff has. That's it. Hello, buffo.
Good day.
That's an hour early. Would that be a good one, I guess, for Colorado, hopefully February seventh.
Oh, lunch is next door.